Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us. We were hoping maybe of convening and then breaking for about 15 minutes to allow other people to come in. This will allow some of the council members and management to have a lunch break, but a quick lunch break. So let me begin by basically saying again, welcome. This is the workshop to facilitate an advanced search for the city manager. It's a two-day workshop beginning today, July 19th, 2022, and it's 12:05, I believe, 12:08 PM. And we're here at the Public Works Conference Room at 5812 Thomas Avenue, obviously here in Laredo. So let's call, roll.
Mayor Pete Seitz.
President.
Councilman Rudy Montalvo Jr.
President.
Councilman Vidal Rodriguez, I mean Mayor Porche, Vidal Rodriguez. Councilman Mercury Martinez. Councilman Alberto Torres Jr.
President.
Councilman Ruben Gutierrez Jr.
President.
Councilmember Dr. Martha Martinez. Councilman Vanessa Perez. Councilmember Alyssa Cigarroa.
President.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. What I was gonna do is, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We're not required to have quorum, right?
Yeah, but we do have a quorum anyway, yeah. So, yeah, let's, a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll break for about 15 minutes to allow other people to join us. A pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, please excuse us for about 15 minutes, and then we'll be back and resume the meeting. Thank you very much. Again, it's 12:35 now, PM. Thank you for your patience. We were in the public comment portion of the meeting. I'm very flexible to this, but I do want to limit it to about three minutes. If you choose, if there's a piece of discussion that you want to prefer to elect and come up to speak on a certain part of our discussion, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. But I do want to limit it to three minutes. Unless you're engaged by any of the council members or myself, you know, we can extend that. But short of that, I would say, let's limit ourselves to about three minutes. And three people so far have signed up. You don't necessarily have to sign up. Just raise your hand if you want to speak on something. Please feel free to, you know, to come forward. You may have to wait until there's a pause in our discussion and we can call you in. We have three people so far that signed up, but we have Melissa R. Cigarroa. Ms. Cigarroa, do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait and see what the meeting unfolds? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Melissa Cigarroa, and I was, I'm a candidate for City Council District Three, and really appreciate the invitation to come here and see the sausage making that's going on, and also have preparation in case I were to have the honor of winning the seat. I want to first thank Mr. Selzman for all of his work. I understand that he'll be leaving soon and will be losing his expertise and steady hand. In working with him with the Bino National River Conservation Project, I have found him to be very professional and really trying to make city government transparent and show us what is possible and how to move the project forward. And, Mr. Selzman, thank you really from the entire technical working group. We really have appreciated your participation in the process. And it's been so key and important that the city has had a voice there as this process has moved forward. I would just say that, as a citizen, you know, we expect council to conduct this search that's coming up for city manager with professionalism and an eye to looking for candidates that have both the professional experience and the educational degrees necessary in order for Laredo to move forward. We know how important our future growth is. We know that we are growing, we're one of the fastest-growing cities in the entire country. So in expanding the search, we need to look nationwide and look for these, look for the people who have the expertise to create growth and prosperity in our city. We do have a strategic plan, the Viva Laredo Comprehensive Plan. It is up now. It's been, I think, five years. It's up for evaluation and to see how we can move it forward and continue our growth and progress in relation to that plan that the citizens came together, the citizens voted on, and really saw a vision for their continued prosperity in our future growth as a city. So thank you again for being here and the opportunity to listen to how council works, and I will be taking notes. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
May I engage Ms. Cigarroa briefly?
Sure.
Just a quick question I'm gonna ask you, a colleague that I'll ask if not maybe the rest of the speakers or their candidates would be willing to answer on their own.
Sure.
How do you feel about the current council making a selection prior to the election that is coming up? If you were to get elected, would you feel that it should be the new council's doing, or what is your opinion on that?
So I think, well, there are a couple of things. While, yes, it would be wonderful for me to contribute my two cents to this process, I also understand, we're in July, the election is in November, that's asking the city to wait a few months in order to put someone in place? I don't know that we, Laredo has that time. So I think if the process is undertaken, that it's undertaken with the seriousness that it needs to be, that the citizens' group that is tasked with finding these candidates is given its purview to find professional candidates, find experienced candidates, and make an informed decision. If that process were to occur within the time span before the election, I would accept it. I'm, you know, if the review is done in the proper way, I think that it's a perfectly legitimate process. It doesn't need to wait for a new council to make that decision. If we're all looking for the good of the city, it's a professional candidate with a requisite experience, I don't see why the process can't move forward.
Would it be safe, then, to say that it is your opinion that we should have a citizens' group ad hoc committee assist in the search?
I think it's important to get all of the sectors of the city involved. I understand the previous committee that went for a search for the city manager was, had the participation of many sectors in the city. So as long as it's a representative group and it's looking for the best of the city, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
I do, I just.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I believe we were discussing that during the workshop as to how, whether, which, which.
Which route to take.
Which process we'll be implementing.
And I'm only taking advantage because this is actually the first time we get to engage the candidates, and we had ample discussion on, should we do it now, should we wait, should there be a citizens committee? And that is why I'm prompting the questions, because it's really the only time, I guess, we'd be able to speak to the candidates.
Well, I would, I would be very interested to hear the arguments for and against. I'm just telling you off the top of my head.
Yeah, let's listen to the experts and the consultant, and then, based on what we hear.
Absolutely. And perfectly willing to, perfectly willing to listen to the consultant and the expert. I am not an expert in the process-making.
And then, okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Dr. Trevino, Victor Trevino.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. Thank you for having me, and I do want to express some thoughts that I do have. Right now, we're at a crossroads. This is a watershed moment for the city of Laredo. We have to do important decisions, and regarding the selection of city manager is one of them. We have to understand that the charter, the city charter is what's at center stage right now. We have to look at it, and we know what it says, but we have to follow it like it says and with that intention. So if we look at the city manager's position, we can select them either by city council or by ad hoc committee, but I think the idea is to have the city manager let him do his job. And this is a city-run, city, city manager city, and we should adhere to that. I think that if we let the city manager do his job and inform the public transparency and just let them know what we're thinking and moving forward, I think that's what we need to do. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Rob. Any questions or comments for the doctor? And if not, thank you. Yeah, we'll visit again on that, on that question raised by council member Torres. Maybe once we're here, the consultant, you know, I'll call upon the same potential candidates to come forward and see what you all think about that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, doctor. Carol Alexander?
Hi.
And then next one is Viviana Frank.
I wrote it down. See if I can read it. Mayor and city councilors and esteemed city staff, I, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Carol Alexander, and I'm here today as a private citizen. I'm also on a couple of city boards, and I work with Laredo Main Street also. I'm here to thank you for recognizing the need for this public workshop connected to the hiring of our next city manager. I'm hoping that everyone recognizes the need to expedite this process and get new administration in place. There are a lot of decisions that need to be made, and we need a leader that's already on the ground working. As elected officials, you know that not everyone can or will make the time to participate. I wish this room was full of advocates for our city or even activists. It is pretty full. I'm here simply to remind the decision-makers on hiring the new city manager that we are not eight different cities united for the purpose of government. We're one city with eight districts. All of the districts use certain features of our city, the airport, the university, the college, the arena, and of course, historic, the historic international downtown Laredo that belongs to every Laredoin. The process should move forward, and I thank you for getting it going.
Thank you very much.
And if you need to hire an ad hoc committee, I mean, or if you're gonna appoint one, you could just go to the city of Laredo website. There are videos of the last ad hoc committee. I don't know, there's like 12 videos, I think, of what the other ad hoc committee. So it took, it seemed like that was an extended amount of time to hire a city manager that didn't last maybe as long as the ad hoc committee lasted. I'm not sure. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Ms. Frank, Viviana, next.
Mayor, council, Mr. Selman, thank you so much for having this workshop. I'm a little fecund. For all you SNLers, that means a little emotional. Thank you for putting this process in place. It's really important to the citizens of Laredo, and I, and I thought about speaking extemporaneously, but this morning I put my thoughts on paper, and so please allow me to read them. I'm a registered architect and a certified economic developer. I became an economic developer because I came to understand that cities have a unique reason to exist. That is, its citizens agree to invest in quality of life and quality of place. They are uniquely empowered by the democratic process to address the challenges of infrastructure, social inequities, and an ever-evolving economy. In doing so, they, cities, us, telegraph to the world who they are as a culture and who they aspire to be. This is especially, it's always been true. People build cities to attract people and keep citizens healthy and happy. But now, more than ever, data companies in every manner possible advertise our key performance indicators. So now, it's ever, it's more true than ever that we telegraph who we are to the world. Like a body needs air, water, and food to live, a city needs infrastructure, a built environment, and an economic engine. As in both cases, to be sustainable and resilient, a plan is required in civil societies. Neither, in civil societies, neither a healthy body or a healthy city can be accomplished alone. Laredo is a home, rural city with a city manager-led form of government. A city manager with experience in all the ICMA core competencies will help the citizens and you establish the open, transparent, and collaborative form of government that a city plan and its implementation requires. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank, for those comments. Yeah, I don't see any other person that's signed up, but if something comes up during the course of our discussion, just raise your hand. Moving on, and I would call upon our city, interim city manager to proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for the record, Keith Selman interim city manager. At this time, I think we've all met Doug. He's done the circuit, and he's made phone calls, so at this, at this point in time, I just turn the floor over to Doug for the workshop.
Good afternoon, Doug. Welcome.
I've been told I've gotta work with this for recording purposes, so I'll try to juggle this as well. So on behalf of Strategic Government Resources, we're certainly pleased and honored to work with the city of Laredo. We were contacted by Keith, geez, it seems like three weeks ago. It's been, it's been a fairly quick process where he had wanted to talk to us about working with your elected body and organization to talk about search processes. And so I got a chance to know Keith a little bit better. In our business, we're never, in the city manager business, we're never two or three people removed. We found connections of people that we both know and respect in this business as well. So what we were asked to do, and then we'll walk through the presentation today and tomorrow, what we were asked to do is to really talk with you as elected officials, as well as, as I understood in talking to the mayor, that many of the candidates for the city council are gonna be here today as well, about drivers that affect the quality of candidates that you will see or will impact the quality of candidates that you will see in a city manager search. And so we structured this as a two-day process because you're maybe wondering about why we're gonna spend so much time talking about governance. But as a professional recruiter, as a former city manager in the business, it is so critical to understand your candidates will be looking at you, looking at your meetings, doing your evaluation, and how you operate as a body, both publicly and privately, will have a direct bearing on the quality of the candidates that will ultimately apply to you. So when Keith and I first talked about this, the concept was, well, let's talk about what a search is. I said, we can certainly do that, but I suggested that it would probably be helpful to do this in two pieces. So today, we're focusing largely on governance, and then the second part tomorrow, we'll be talking about more of the guts and the pieces of a traditional city manager search process. And so with that, as a little bit of a background, I'll tell you that the, the decision that, whether it be this body or a future body does with regards to selecting your city manager is either the most important thing you do, or certainly amongst the top two or three things that you do as a council. When you think about that, you represent nine individuals, whoever's here today or who may be here in the future, and you're all gonna come with your goals and your desires and your interests in terms of what you want to accomplish. And I'm gonna go through, the audience's gonna have a chance to hear this, and a chance to interview many of the council members, not everyone because of scheduling, about what you wanted to do, why you wanted to run for public office, what's your legacy. The person that you hire as your city manager is going to help you accomplish those goals individually and then collectively as a body. It is the CEO, are you good? You can still catch? Okay. Is the CEO of your organization in terms of running hundreds of millions, I think your budget's around 800 million people, or $800 million, and about 3,000 employees, something of that nature, across a variety of business lines. It's a very, very complex organization to run and very diverse services. But your decision in who you hire and how you work with that person is so critical to ultimately helping you accomplish the goals and objectives of what you're trying to do. So I applaud you for recognizing that this is a big issue, and you wanted to have some time. We work with a number of communities to help that as well. So for those of you who don't know, SGR, for the audience, I'll just give you a little bit of a background. We've been around since 1999. We're a Texas-based company. The firm is based in the Dallas-Fort Worth Metroplex area. We are involved in recruitment, assessments, leadership development, training. We run our own conferences and events. We do a lot of special project-type efforts. So the nature of our firm is we're very much embedded in local government operations, literally across the country in the effort. I've identified our core values and things of that nature. You're gonna get a chance to see a little bit of the type of work that we do with many of my time, getting into my background here shortly, working with councils in this type of format, helping you with strategic planning, helping you certainly run recruitment activities, things like that. So we come recognizing we're not some group that doesn't understand the culture and the DNA of this. We're very much embedded in the nature of local governments. You had all seen the background of my history. I've got about 35 years in city management in Maryland, Michigan, and Florida, prior to being actually recruited for SGR. I hired SGR to do some recruitment when my last position as city manager in Lakeland, Florida, which is a community of about, close to 125,000, located between Tampa and Orlando. Our, our city is about 75 square miles. It's a little smaller than UN population, but in dollars and cents, very comparable. When I left, it was about $600 million operation. We do everything a city can imagine doing, including electric generation and distribution, and we serviced about a quarter million people in the immediate area. We provide services outside our corporate boundaries. So I've worked in very small organizations, worked in very large organizations, and get an understanding of the complexities that it comes to take in that regard. I mentioned I was probably the best commercial for SGR because I hired them to assist me in some recruitments, a couple of my department heads, and the principal of the firm, Ron Holfield, and I just kind of clicked. His style of management, his innovation, the approach was very similar to mine, and through the recruitments that we worked in, one thing led to another, and he asked what I wanted to do in the second chapter of my career. And I wasn't really ready to retire, but decided to join him and said, I'll give you a couple of years, if I don't like it, I'll get back in the game. That was close to seven years ago now, so it's really been a fun opportunity. It's enjoyable, it allows me to do things I'm passionate about and get back to the profession as well. So I spend, for the benefit of the group, about a third of my time in executive recruitment activities, working with cities like yourself, counties, organizations, to do city manager, department head, city attorney, economic development director searches with boards, things of that nature. About a third of my time working in a session similar to what we've got here with councils and governance, and working on council-manager relationships, and also working on strategic planning and priority-based budgeting, variety of those functions. And the other third of my time is largely speaking at state, national conferences about kind of best management practices and issues. So the things you're gonna get today kind of represent a collective wisdom of our business as well as someone who's been in that, that position, and certainly is handling a number of executive recruitments across the country as well. So the way we structured this is in two different sessions. Today, as I said, I wanted to talk a little bit about governance, and for the benefit of the audience, I had a chance to interview a number of the elected officials. This came so quickly, we weren't able to get everyone scheduled, but to those of you participating, get a chance. I'm really trying to get a handle of where you're at, what interests, what desires, what the challenges, the opportunities are. As I promised them, I don't identify who said what, where, and how, but you'll see a variety of slides based upon kind of characterization of feedback that I had received from individuals. Sometimes they represent more than one individual, but it's collective thought. Hopefully, it'll spur some conversation because some of the items are very critical on yourselves and reflective of things that are challenges and opportunities, and I appreciate that because you never really get to the issues and challenges unless you're willing to talk about those things that are really problematic for your organization. So hopefully, the feedback they've got will be able to capture some of the spirit of those conversations. And then I want to talk a little bit about, because the nature, as I said earlier, of the individuals that will be applying potentially for your position will dictate on how you operate. And so to do that, we wanted to talk about effective governance principles. So we're gonna talk a little bit about your thoughts as elected officials, where you think you're doing well and where you think there are challenges and opportunities going forward. We're gonna do a little bit of kind of, I realize this is a council in transition because you've got election coming, but as your one speaker said, you're gonna still be in place between now and the end of the year, so you still have to operate. And as you very well know, government doesn't stop, it continues to move forward. There's always big issues, challenges, you get budget sessions, things like that, so we're gonna try to leave you some concepts and work through some things to help you work stronger as a team. And then, at the end of this, I want to go through towards the end, we have developed what we call Governance Polarity Assessment, which gives you a chance to kind of rate yourself, a self-board evaluation, and we'll kind of unpack what that looks and feels like, and try to leave you, since we're gonna have the day, to maybe give you some principles and concepts that will allow you to kind of work through some challenging issues collectively. You think about it, it's a unique group. Most boards are, they have nominating committees, and they get a chance to pick and choose who they want to be on the board. That's not the way it works in local government. You get selected, you get hired, elected by your constituents, and typically, within a couple of weeks after election, you're thrown right into it, and there's a whole lot of stuff that's before you that you really haven't had a chance to get up to speed on. And so we're gonna talk about how to maybe help that out as well. So that's gonna be today's process. Tomorrow, which is the second part of the effort, we're gonna then drill down after we deal with governance to talk more about the city manager search process. So we're gonna talk a little bit about what that looks like in terms of the marketplace today, giving you some background about, you've heard about the Great Resignation, the Great Reset, whatever you wanna talk about, that has certainly impacted the number and the quality of the candidates that are out there. In a similar vein, I ask all of you that I spoke to what you were seeking in terms of what you thought were the biggest issues and challenges that the next manager will likely face here, also where you think there were challenges in council-manager relations and administration relationships with that. I'll talk about what a traditional search process looks like, and as SGR, we're one of the largest, if not the largest, in terms of the number of searches in public sector work about, this is the way a search normally works, but as you can imagine, we're across the country, we find different times and places, different councils are in different stages. Sometimes they've got elections, sometimes they're changing their form of government to a council-manager form. There's pros and cons of how you want to, when you want to pull the trigger on that, and I'll try to have that conversation about, these are conscious decisions you make, and for every decision, there's consequences associated with that. But we can give you some thoughts, and I assume we'll get into a dialogue very similar to some of the comments that were raised here earlier by a couple of your public speakers as well. From there, I'll then go through what we, what you've told me, or at least those I've spoken to and your staff that I've spoken to so far, what you've thought are the types of background, skill sets, attributes of the ideal council or manager position. I'll couple that with what we see in the profession. One of your speakers spoke about ICMA. ICMA stands for the International City-City Management Association. I'm a member. Most of your colleagues that will be in this profession will come with ICMA membership as well. So we'll also talk about what ICMA, as our trade organization identifies, is the most critical skills collectively that we think a successful manager has, and then a background from me working with a variety of communities, large and small, other attributes that maybe didn't come up in conversations that I think you might want to be considering to go forward from there. And then from that point, we'll be a conversation with you about where you want to go next. Do you want to start things off? And as I said, it's premature for me to identify what that looks like until we have some of the conversations. So that's kind of the process of the day. The two are related. Hopefully, you'll be able to kind of follow why we structured it this way, and appreciate Keith and the staff in terms of working, working with us to help pull us together. So the first thing I wanted to start off talking about was the impact associated with strategic visioning and planning. And I know that you, in fact, this date was selected because you're trying to coordinate with another one of, another consulting firm that was doing your strategic planning process. As I say, we do a lot of that work ourselves, and I do a lot of that work as a representative of SGR. But what I will tell you is that you've got, you've got the foundations of that, and one of your speakers mentioned this morning as well, that you've got a strategic plan. The element of why that is so important is that that's gonna be one of the first elements that any prospective candidate's gonna look at. Do you have a plan? What's your vision? Where are you trying to go? What are the goals and objectives that you're trying to accomplish? And they will evaluate their own skill set to say, beyond the interest of a given community, do I have the right stuff to help you advance those goals and objectives? Because collectively, you've spoken as a body about these are the things you'd like to have accomplished. Now, there's some questions about delivery on that that comes into play, and that certainly has certainly a bearing with regards to the number of candidates you've had in and out of the position as manager. But I want to strive the fact, a lot of communities that we work with don't have a strategic vision, don't have a plan, don't have any bones to start with. And so it's really hard for council candidate, or council manager relations and a candidate to come in and look at that saying, well, what do you want to do? What do you expect me to do as your manager? So you've got the starting of that, so I want to talk a little bit about what that looks like. The reason it's so critical is that there are many organizations that will have strategic plans, and they sit on one side of the bookshelf, and then they do their operational budgets and their annual budgets, and they're on a different side, and the two are not linked at all. And those communities typically are not successful communities because they've articulated what they want to do, but they haven't made the connections to how they're gonna do it. So unless you integrate those two elements, and those are called a variety of things from priority-based budgeting to everything in between, but the goal here is to make sure, once you collectively identified what you want to accomplish, how do you get it done is the critical component of what your staff and what a manager will help you drive. So I use the analogy of the strategic visioning, which is your role. So I use the analogy of the strategic visioning, which is your role as a council. The planning is going to be the discussion of the staffs, but the strategic vision is that vision and issue. It basically is the roof of a house. It overarches everything you do and becomes a foundation of where you're trying to accomplish as an organization and where you want to go. From there, you get into the different floors, and that gets into strategic initiatives, your key goals, your objectives you're trying to accomplish, the metrics and how you want to track, am I getting anywhere along the line? Am I making forward? The action plans, the individual departments are involved with, and all the way down, as you can see, the operating budgets and your capital improvement program. We refer to those organizations that do this well and that have effective council-manager relationships and effectively achieve their goals and objectives as those are all in alignment. So your goals, your objectives, your budgets, your operating plans, your staffing, all the way down, all the people are pulling the oars in the same direction or singing from the same hymn, if you will, with regards to that. If you don't accomplish that, you really are kind of in different directions as well. So that's a very critical component of understanding what's happening. Now, the challenge we always face in recognizing that, as I mentioned earlier, you're a big organization, 800 million operations, several thousand employees running around doing all sorts of stuff. Rarely do we find elected officials know all that, and they're not expected to know all that. You're coming in from your own backgrounds, your experience in programs, and so you tend to want to be drawn into those areas where you've got more comfort. And so we always try to encourage councils, stay high, stay at that 10,000-foot level, let your staff work that plan who are trained in those areas to assist you. It doesn't mean that your background is not important and adds insight, but recognizing the role as an elected official, you want to basically keep that high-level policymaking plan because the visioning component of where you want to go as an organization is your responsibility as elected officials. So this is the role we talked about. In SGR, we refer to strategic visioning as a long walk in the same direction. You're not going to get there overnight, but you have to have some endpoint destination in mind on what you're trying to do as an organization. And so an effective strategic visioning process is like a GPS. Basically, where do you want to go? Where's the point that I want to ultimately land this, you know, on a trip if it's a GPS or as an organization in terms of your goals and objectives? From there, you're going to get all sorts of detours, just like your GPS says, "I've got traffic, I've got road construction," you have to come throughout. I guarantee nobody thought COVID was going to hit, and a lot of strategic visions and plans had to be adjusted as a result of that because they're unforeseen. It doesn't mean you stop what you're trying to accomplish, it just means you've got to work your way through the detours and the effort from there. And so what I'm really focusing on and what I hope as you do this work with one of our sister consulting firms, as you work with your strategic visioning process, is that you really are envisioning that long-term direction of the organization. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about vision and mission statements and organizational values. I think those are things that are lacking in your current plan that we recommend you consider. But once again, high level, what do you want to be? What do you want to stand for? How do you want your staff to interact with each other and with the public and with your stakeholders and with you? All that is part of that strategic visioning process that goes forward. The actual details, once you leave it at that point, that's where you've got to hand off to your staff, your professionals, the folks that have been trained in the various operations to allow them to execute the plan. So in another way, sometimes I often say, "Well, what's interesting in council and administration? Council is like the person that owns the boat. They get to say, 'I want to go to this port, I want to go to Cypress,' or 'I want to go to wherever the pace would be.'" But the person that owns the boat rarely pilots the boat. The captain does that, and they coordinate with the crews, the engine crews, and the kitchen crews, and all the maintenance and the staff to make that work. That's kind of that analogy I want to just leave with you as a council member. You get to pick the port, i.e. the destination or the vision, but let your staff do, how do you get there? And they're going to tell you, "Hey, we've got storms, we've got to navigate here, we've got to stop at this port to get gas," things of that nature. Those are details that you really don't have to be concerned about as elected officials, assuming you have a competent captain that's running the day-to-day operation and the staff that comes behind it. So think of those in terms of that implementation. The visioning's yours, the planning, the details, and as one of your speakers mentioned as well, an effective plan will also incorporate key success measures, key performance index, because your GPS will always tell you how long it takes you to get and if you're running into traffic, but you also, you always kind of know how you're coming along that way. If you're not tracking your goals and objectives, you're going to have that problem. So at the end of the day, it's like, did we accomplish anything? Did we move in the right direction? Did we take a bunch of pivots off to the side? Those are very critical, that's another piece I'd be recommending as we go forward. So the good news, I said, you actually have a foundational document. You've worked with a group, you've identified six strategic outcomes that are identified there on that sheet, and then below that, you've gone through a ranking process of eight different council priorities that you've put together. So I think that's a great start, and as I said, when we work with organizations, we see them that have no plans, some that are very robust, we try to take what you got and then go from there to go forward. As someone who does this with councils, large and small, and organizations across the country, I've got some suggestions for you that you might want to think through as you're going through this process in the next couple of weeks. I think you're still trying to get your other consulting firm in here to help you in that area. One of the things that we didn't see, we saw the Laredo's piece, is a vision statement. And I know this may sound like, you know, what's the importance of a vision statement? I think one of you, when I spoke to you, raised this, and I just kind of smiled because it was already going to be part of my presentation. That vision statement should be an overarching placement of what, and a clear description of what you want to do, and it's basically the why of why you exist as a city. I mean, you think about it, cities, the only reason cities exist is to provide a higher level of service than they could get from an unincorporated area. So if that's the foundational work, what do you want to do with that? Where do you want to go? What do you want to accomplish? So it really is the why of why you exist as an organization. As I mentioned, it's an overarching direction, and hopefully, it's something that each one of you, be it here now or as elected officials coming in the future, we typically work with cities and do strategic visioning process, they're typically done every year, and a review. You may not change your vision statement year to year, but you may tweak it because whoever comes and goes onto this process has to have ownership, they've got to have skin in the game of that vision. And at the highest level, even though you may not always agree on everything that you come across, you hopefully can all agree on the future direction of the organization. And so it sounds a little bit lighthearted not including that, but it really does bring you back when you're in the midst of a healthy debate about a given issue that's maybe polarizing the board or your community. What do we want to accomplish and does it fit into that arena? So I'd really encourage you to, as you work through this process, to look at a vision statement and try and craft that. And that takes a little bit of conversation, dynamics, and discussions amongst yourselves and your staff and your community as a whole. The other piece that we didn't see was a mission statement. And your mission statement is, now that you've established the why, the question becomes is the what and how. What do we do every single day in order to help us achieve that vision for the organization? So once again, kind of high level, you have a role to play in this as elected officials to help craft that mission statement, and it really becomes something that should drive from a day-to-day function. If I'm cutting the grass, I understand what I'm doing that helps the organization as a mission to ultimately achieve its goals as a vision statement. And so it helps drive the culture of the organization in terms of understanding roles and responsibilities. So that's another piece I'd encourage you to consider. And the last piece that we'd encourage you to consider, most of the successful communities we work with have organizational values. And all of you have spoken to me in various levels, as well as staff that I'd spoken to, about concerns of the organizational culture, what's it like to be within the city. And so we typically work with organizations to help develop or consider them developing organizational values. I've given you some examples there of the types of high levels. Every organization has them differently, but you get a flavor of it, and they really will help you build the culture of your workforce. And when you think about it, what other form of government affects a typical citizen greater than your local government? Think about when you get up in the morning. You get up in the morning, you know, you go to the bathroom, you're brushing your teeth, you've got water, you've got to have the water. A clean water delivery is a critical component. You go to the bathroom, you flush the toilet, well, that's the other side of the equation. You've got to make sure that works as well. When they get into the car and they drive down the road, although there's lots of different jurisdictional functions on streets between cities and counties and state and Texas and the US dot, but the bottom line is, most of the time, they're going to be involving some level of local government roadway jurisdictions, including traffic safety signs, traffic lights, all those things that are involved. And the encounter an accident, it's going to be the local government, it's going to be your fire, your police, your first responders are going to come forward. When you ultimately, you know, if you're walking the street, you're on sidewalks that are done by, if you're riding a transit system, you may not be, it's a component unit, those things, think about everything that you do just as elected officials, think about how many ways you've touched a citizen across the board. And all those several thousand employees of you that you employ as a city are basically your first contact, and their perception of you as a government are going to be based upon how they were probably treated or the quality of services they get. And so think about that. The federal government doesn't touch them that way every day, state government certainly doesn't touch them that every day, but you do. And so the culture you build as an organization will have a direct bearing on the sense of place, the quality of life, and the perceptions of your community in terms of how they feel about the city of Laredo. I do a lot of economic development searches, it's always funny, when I typically go into communities, I go to coffee shops and I just kind of listen to conversations. I'm amazed at the number of communities that I've been to where, when I just say, "What do you think? I'm thinking about moving here, what's it like?" The number of people that sometimes speak so eloquently about how great their city is, but also I'm convinced there's a lot of people that will have just the opposite. They say, "It doesn't work, police doesn't come, fire doesn't come, water's mess," whatever the case would be. I will tell you, as somebody who works in economic development, a lot of that economic development background is adapt. People are looking at your community and getting perceptions about you and the success that you have or the failures you have, they have already done their homework before they've decided to knock on your door and say, "I want to consider coming here." And so recognizing you may be missing opportunities if you don't have that organizational culture that helps your employees, present that information forward as well. So those are just connecting the dots in that regard. So before I shift, I was going to go into some governance and leadership principles. Any comments, any questions, any perceptions on that? This is meant to be interactive, so if there's something I've said that resonates with you or you've got additional comments, I'm more than glad to unpack those as we go forward. So.
Okay, we're okay. Thank you.
All right, great. We'll keep moving on then. All right, great. So as I said, the importance of how you operate as a board is not only important from who you ultimately will attract and potentially select from as a city manager, but it'll also affect everything that I just talked about, all the delivery of your services, because your employees are all watching you and being part of this. And think about it from a sports analogy, I'm a sports guy, nobody wants to be for a losing team, you know? Everybody wants to be at least a team that wins more than they lose in the process, and so that helps you build that culture as well. They really want to be part of a winning team, and they're looking at you as kind of the board directors and the owners, are you part of that winning team as well? So we're going to spend some time talking about what it means in terms of governance and politics and what that looks like. So I always like to start with some definitions, and so when you look at the definition of politics, which has all sorts of connotation versus governance, but in this local government arena, the two can't be separated, it is what it is. I said, you get elected, you don't get appointed in these positions. So whenever we're working with groups, you say, "Well, what's the dictionary say about that?" So if you go to the term "politics," you'll find activities that relate to influencing the actions of policies or governments or keeping people in power in government, makes sense. The work of a job such as yourselves as elected officials who are part of a government, or the opinions that people have about or what should be done by governments, not to say that nobody has any thoughts about that. I'm sure you've got all those emails, those phone calls as well about their thoughts and opinions about what their government could do. So that's the classic Webster definition of, you know, politics. Now, we'll talk a little bit about the foundations of democracy and the Greeks and things of that nature, so I often go back to look at the Greeks' definition of how that works. So when you dissect the word "politics," it starts with poly, meaning many, obviously it's a very broad base, and the other component is tics, which in this case is blood-sucking. So, you know, depending on which perspective you may be, and trying to do what's right and everything else, but recognize it's brutal out there, especially now in today's days and age with social media and everything else. So another great political orator, Groucho Marx, "Politics, the art of looking at trouble, finding it everywhere, diagnosing it incorrectly, and applying the wrong remedies." And I guarantee, although you may think that, your constituents will think that will be the case as well, so I think Groucho got it right as well from a humorous standpoint. So the piece I want to leave you with as part of this discussion is the fact that under our form of government and the form that you've adopted here, you are representing people. You're basically elected by districts or on a citywide basis, but basically, you're here to represent their interests. Not necessarily that you do everything that they want to do, because I guarantee you probably won't be able to accomplish all that, or should you necessarily always do that as well? But the bottom line is, you are going to be in a very position as an elected official to have background information that is so much more detailed than the average citizen's going to have. And so the question really becomes is, what do you do with that? And you have to have these conversations, and you certainly, a part of the role that you play as an elected official is educating your community about the challenges and the issues and things of that nature. But basically, this quote came forward here from Edmund Burke, "Representatives not only the people, not only their industry, but their judgment, and he betrays them if he sacrifices it for their opinions." Now, I don't mean to say that the opinions of your population are not important, that's not the point I'm raising. It's just they may not have all the facts, all the figures, all the understanding of the dynamics that you've got, and if you don't take and maximize the value of that as an elected official, you're really not representing the interest in the best way you can go forward. So Edmund Burke has been well-known as a statesman, and I just pride that point home as well. So this is the first couple of slides we're going to talk about. When I chatted with all of you about your thoughts and opinions about some of the reasons you ran for office and some of the challenges you faced, as I say, I'm not going to say who said what, where it is, but hopefully, they'll generate some discussions amongst yourselves as well. So the first thing is, you all ran for public office. It's a tough business to be in, you all know that, and the candidates are about to run in. If you don't know that, be prepared, because it certainly is a very challenging position to be involved with. But normally, you come with, what do you want to accomplish? I mean, you decided you wanted to run for office, you wanted to do something, right? My sense is, what is that legacy that you want to leave? You've got term limits here, so you've got two four-year terms that you could be involved with in the effort. So these are some of the feedbacks that we had received in the discussions. Want to be part of the effort to address the history of allegations, wrongdoing with Laredo city government, that we stopped micromanaging the city manager and the administration, were able to track and achieve the goals of city councils established on behalf of our community, we've revitalized the downtown Laredo and historic area, we're good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and looked out for their interest, we left Laredo in a better position than we were first elected, they re-entered the vision for the city, implemented new programs, events, and developments in the community, we facilitated the acquisition development of Westside Park for area residents. Some other thoughts? Able to lower our tax rate from 63 cents to 60 cents, even with the state mandated revenue cap, maintained the strength of the city's overall financial position, we resolved the four-five international bridge project. Remember, these are forward-thinking, not necessarily, I know that's still in progress now, but that was a legacy that was discussed. We addressed Laredo's transportation challenges for the benefit of the trucking industry and our residents, a couple of examples there as well. We developed the plan to successfully address our water, wastewater, and street maintenance challenges. We furthered community harmony by resolving conflicts between commercial, residential, and industrial-zoned areas for the benefit of all stakeholders, and assisted in the redevelopment of former abandoned apartment complex for the benefit of area residents. Pretty high in goals, and hopefully, you'll see some of those things that you've told me, you know, many times I paraphrased them because I heard them from different folks as well, but when you look at that list, that's a lot of good stuff. And that's the legacy that those that I spoke with wanted to leave in the organization as part of you, that you had a hand in making those things happen. And that's why I say, "God love you for wanting to run for office," because it's a challenging job, but you have a vision, you have a direction, and you want to be part of it, and you want to make change in the effort. Yeah, jump in, yeah. Yeah, jump in. Yeah.
And I understand you were talking about a vision that came in late, and I understand why you ran for politics. I don't know who you spoke to. Certainly it wasn't me, but there's a lack of vision, in my point of view, that I don't see anywhere South Laredo. None of those have nothing to do with South Laredo, so that's half of the city. It's not in that presentation or part of the vision for the future, so.
Understood. As I said, this came together really quickly. We only had about a week to get everybody involved and trying to get whatever the meetings we'd get, and we tried to get as many of the people that we could during that weekend scheduling, so.
Who was everybody? Because I know there are city staff that have been working more than us, have been born here. Somebody could amend you something for South Laredo.
Well, all right. So once again, what I did is, once we were brought on board, we shut our no doubt to everybody, and we tried to work with your staff to get as many of you scheduled as possible during that week. And so this is not a moment, this is a moment in time just today. If you're going to go forward in governance, this is not saying this is your final vision or anything else. These are just the feedback that I've received.
I'm out.
Yeah.
I'll tell you straight out, I'm out.
Okay.
But the vision is supposed to be with the city to say, "You know what? Regardless of I'm not here, they stay or people, new people come in, but it's part of what you said of the vision. There we have a track record or we see that vision for the future, and somebody needs to add South Laredo, because for far too many years, South Laredo has been subpar."
Understood. Understood. As I said, my, well, all I could do is get what I've got. When you work on your visioning statement, when you work on your strategic planning, that should be part of it. And my point, in a perfect world, I would have been able to get a hold of everybody and speak to everybody and have that, but that was the cards we were dealt with. Yeah.
Did you all want to be interviewed?
So both of you all didn't?
I didn't get interviewed. I don't know if you got interviewed.
If I may, if I may, because I did get called about it. The four or five obviously being talked about possibly in South Laredo. The outer loop is also a enormous part of the city of South Laredo. The outer loop coming on. So you're talking about those projects that are coming about, God willing, if it does happen. But the four or five might be in South Laredo. The outer loop might be a huge part of South Laredo.
The four or five will be in South Laredo.
There you go. But it certainly encompassing the entire city, the lowering our tax rate is for the entire city, not just the north side of town, you know?
Tax rate.
South Laredo was involved. As far as the outer loop is the four or five.
Yeah, so we need a, so, yeah, the point is, well, it will be.
No argument, the point. At the end of the, as I said, I can only play with the cards I've dealt with in the process to have the dialogue to say, these are things that, the point that I want to leave you with, regardless if your particular goal didn't get to me in terms of what you're trying to accomplish, the goal was, you're here to do something, and that ultimately should become part to, to the council member's point of the strategic vision, the overall arching, the goals and the priorities. I'm not here to say this is an inclusive list. It's what I've got based on timetable we had to work through it. The point is, I want to leave you, you're all elected to do things, and you all want to do things, so the question is, how do you best accomplish that individually and collectively as a body? That's the point I want to make sure that you capture in this as well.
They're just examples.
Pardon?
They're just examples.
They're feedback that I've received to date, absolutely, in the process. They're not all-inclusive by any stretch. Exactly. Exactly. So the next thing that I wanted to, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I want to just, we are putting the biggest investment council member in South Laredo that's been involved in that. So that's the biggest investment city ever made on any project. So I'm surprised that nobody mentioned that.
It, well, it is in another slide about major projects and issues going forward. So I said, I asked you all a bunch of questions, and so depending on where the responses land, they land on different slides as well, but those were kind of the, when I ask you about, what do you want to accomplish?
We understand it's an example, and we understand what this is. We're having half of the cities represented by the South. We didn't get asked, even if it's an example or not, but we do like to feel that South Laredo is acknowledged. The sports companies coming about by this council who has fought for it through referendum, working with the people, knowing that we actually are trying to fix an area. I mean, we're not degrading anybody. Everything's important, but for many years, South Laredo has been subpar, and as we support other districts and other councils, we expect or we want to feel that South Laredo is also being included.
Fair, fair statement. No argument to you at all. I fully understand.
Keep in mind the water projects that we have coming up in the next few years. The bulk of those are going to be in South Laredo.
But a lot of, may I just add that a lot of what he's working with is from the interviews, and if, and he reached out to all of us on multiple occasions, trying to schedule interviews, and if this is, it's just a preliminary.
Yeah, it's a presentation.
See, I mean, if you.
Yeah, I think we need to move on.
Right.
Gotcha.
Yeah, you can see the dynamics here.
Yeah. When you, when you, when you see the slides when I've talked about advanced, it's basically from, I was able to get a hold of five folks in the process that could fit into that window, or we could juggle schedules and things of that nature, so it's going to reflect that group. So I apologize for those folks that were not able to be part of that. Our effort was to try to get everyone, but I know everybody had schedules and issues and challenges to accomplish, so. So the next question that I'd ask with that as a background, with those folks that were part of the interview effort, I ask about, you know, what your thoughts were about how you operate as a governing body? So this is your own self-reflection of how you do what you do as elected officials. So perceptions of improving over time, still work to be done, some comments about micromanaging the city manager and interfering with staff operations and some, you know, how that impacts the day-to-day functions of those employees. Still some concerns that were raised about truck and fractured relationships on the council, so that you can work as a group. We need to be less territorial and district-centric and more citywide-focused, and I recognize that's always a challenge, because you get elected from your district unless you're in a citywide or an at-large position, so you want to advocate for their interests, but it's also you're part of a bigger organization, and how do you balance those interests? So there were some discussions there, and it's part of the things we'll talk about today. We'll help you kind of work through some of those things as well. Setting goals and objectives, but don't necessarily set expectations or accountability or track. How do you, if you're making progress or accomplishing those? And a sense that you pivot a lot from your goals and changing directions and priorities through resolutions and actions after you've adopted the plan. Some other feedback, for the most part, we generally work well together in the issues that affect the entire community. We need to review and strengthen our ethics policy, ensure that we enforce potential violations. We can sometimes be dysfunctional and sometimes seem to pit council members against each other instead of finding common grounds and consensus, and we sometimes have difficulty in getting past previous actions or votes. And this concept, once again, this ebb and pull between being district and citywide, how do you represent the two, especially if there may be some conflicts or interests there, and so that's certainly a challenge, and we see that a lot, because the question becomes is, how do I represent my interests but also represent the city overall? So other elements, is it related to some feedback received on the governance component? Is I asking you about your thoughts of the council-administration relationship? How do you handle that? Remember, it's a unique role as a manager. They work for nine of you, and you're all going to have different thoughts and opinions. You're all going to have different styles, and how do you find that relationship working, or what challenges do you have in that effort? So this is, it's kind of inherent in the nature of working for multiple personalities and multiple individuals. Sometimes difficult for the manager to implement goals because of changing the foundation of work of what you want that person to accomplish. For the most part, it works well, but a desire for the manager to build relationships with you individually and collectively as a group. How do you evaluate the manager? I will tell you, as we talk about governance, typically in evaluation process, I work with a lot of cities and formally helping establish evaluation processes. Normally what you say is, where's your strategic plan? Where are your goals and objectives? And is your manager helping you accomplish those? But if you don't have that plan, then how do you evaluate, or if you don't have a goal of what you're trying to do, how do you know if the manager's accomplishing what he or she is supposed to be doing? So that's another way of tying back to your strategic visioning process. Perception of micromanaging by some on the council, some concerns that sometimes the processes internally haven't always worked well, and what's the role of the council to oversee that, to make sure that policies and procedures are being administered appropriately and equitably? It can be difficult. You've gone through, I think I saw five managers in the last seven or 10 years, five or six managers, not counting interims that may have been involved with that. It's a lot of transition, a lot of moving parts. Not surprisingly, there's going to be some questions, is everything working okay back home within the confines of the municipal organization? And I will tell you, we'll talk about this tomorrow a little bit about the impact of that. That much transition in the leadership of your municipal administration will no doubt have ripple effects throughout, from the lowest level of the organization all the way up to your department directors. And so having stability in that is something that I think you should strive for as well going forward. And then decide to spend some time clarifying and understanding the roles of the council and the manager. We're certainly going to be doing that today and looking at some charter components as well. I also ask each of you that I spoke with about if you could wave a magic wand and change one thing. Some of you gave me more than one thing, but that's okay. I gave you the wand to do that as well, you know, about either the way you govern as an organization or the way in which your council-administration relationship works. These were some of the responses we got. A desire, the recognizing you as policymakers and allowing the administration to run their day-to-day functions, but the council is more focused on the entirety of Laredo. It's not just the needs of our own districts. And so even, those are feedback I'd heard from you, so there's a, recognizing that challenge you face as an elected official, that you work better, that you become trusting of each other in a greater role in achieving a more common vision for the city of Laredo, that you get beyond just trying to get to five votes and can you get to eight, can you get to nine? And there certainly are times you will do that, but basically trying to get a sense of, how do you get as many people on board as opposed to just getting to five and thinking that's the, that's the end of the day? And there's a recognition that you've got some challenges, that there are things that aren't necessarily working well, either as a group or in your organization or in your community, and that in order for us to get better at that, we got to talk about those things. Sometimes that's painful. You got to pick at a scab and work through that as well, but there are, all communities face challenges, and all boards will chase those types, chase those types of challenges in organizations. And a recognition, several of you had said this in different ways, but basically trying to stabilize municipal organization and the administration so that your employees can respect you for their work and their contributions. We're going to spend some time tomorrow talking about what's happening, especially at the local government level in the world of the great resignation and reset. And I will tell you, the single most challenging problems local governments have right now are recruiting and retaining employees. And there's a variety of reasons. We'll go into that tomorrow, but if you don't get your arms around that, when I go back to that point, think of how many things you do every single day, your organization does every single day. If you don't have enough people to do those work and do it, and they feel part of a bigger culture, and they feel bigger than, and proud for what they are trying to accomplish for your organization, you're going to, you're going to lose them to those organizations that will. If they're dedicated to public service, they're going to find a home, but it may not be here if you don't get that under control yourselves as well, so. Other changes? Desire to stop the revolving door. That's part of the conversations while we're meeting today and tomorrow. Generally, you want to do what's right for Laredo, but need to be citywide-focused, less territorial-focused. Remember, we serve everyone. We've got micromanaging concerns again with the administration. This was something I thought was important. I've not, obviously, I've looked at your plan. I've not run your plan to get at your strategic visioning, but the sense is, you've got goals, you've got objectives, you've got some prioritizations, and, but then I didn't see any KSIs or anything of that nature, and some of you said that as well. We developed the plan. We spent some effort, but then it kind of gets lost, what happens day-to-day, and we've got some general direction, but we really don't know as elected officials where we stand on that. One of you had mentioned about adopting a vision statement. As I said, I smiled when I heard that, because that was going to be part of the presentation. And the sense of, in the past, that there has been a perception that the city manager has kind of always been threatened with, hey, if you don't do what I want to do, it's five votes and you're gone. It's a unique perception out there, but that certainly is a concern. Managers kind of recognize that. I joke that in our profession, we say managers are typically hired and fired with enthusiasm, but rarely by the same boards, which means that you can walk on water with one board, have a different election outcome two years, four years later, and you've done everything and anything you wanted to do, and the next council said, well, we want somebody else to do it. So we recognize that as part of the profession. There's ways that you protect your family and yourself in that regard, but the bottom line is, you got to allow them to, you've hired them, typically your highest-paid employee, let them manage their organization, and, you know, they're not always going to tell you everything you want to hear. They'll tell you what they believe is in the best interest of the city, and then you make decisions from there, but, you know, if it's constant, under the microscope and constant effort, that sometimes does not get you very, very stable administrations, so. So let me stop there and recognition, appreciate the comments. Those were certainly comments that I'd heard from the five of you that were able to connect with me on that effort. Any thoughts or opinions about anything on that before we kind of talk about some group dynamics?
You stop that by, you shouldn't stop by.
Fair enough. I got you, man. I hear you.
Anyone else?
Hey, boys. As I said, I hope you keep your rollin' through the process here. So I want to talk a little bit about group dynamics. As I said, you've got, you've got nine of you on the council. You're trying to find some common ground. There's a variety of studies that have been done about how do groups come together and work. This would be interesting for those candidates that are running. If you hopefully get elected in the group, you'll probably see some of the things that you'll be facing here, but Bruce Tuckman was involved initially. He was hired by the. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm used to having a lavalier. Bruce Tuckman was involved in working with the Navy to look at how ultimately is the submarine fleets were coming together. Think about that. You've got people in close quarters, you're being drafted, World War II, all that sort of element coming together. How does that, how do people come together and work as a team as well? And so the factor is, is what stages do typical groups go through as they come together for the first time before they ultimately become a highly functioning unit as a group? And so there's some direct parallels to you as elected officials. You're thrown into the process. You may or may not know each other. You have some understanding. You got different backgrounds, personalities, different goals and objectives. How does that all work? And so what Tuckman's study identified is that there are traditionally four stages that come together that allow, at different points in time, of a team coming together to become highly functioning groups. So the first stage is, not surprisingly, forming. And this is where the team comes together. They kind of learn about excitement and opportunities and challenges and what they wanted to achieve. Not surprisingly, they tend to work independently, because they haven't worked with each other in the past, per se. They are generally, they're, they're excited about being part of a team, but they really don't kind of get the sense of common vision, common direction, common outcomes, so they're kind of working off their own script, so to speak. It's a traditional background. And then, but they will start to look at those of you that have been on council or teams, that they've been here longer, maybe ought to keep an eye on what they're doing, because they've been here. They kind of know the ropes and understand that as well, and so they may start modeling some of the behavior of longer-tenured members of a team. Well, not surprisingly, I often joked in the profession as somebody that managed a lot of people, the job's easy but for people, but people bring personalities, the people bring their perceptions, their dynamics, and their backgrounds to the table. That's what makes this job interesting. And so not surprisingly, especially at a high-performing group such as a council member, you all come with wanting to accomplish things. At some point, you get into a group called storming. The group is called storming. And this is where all of a sudden, now you're starting to get thoughts and opinions about your friends and your colleagues on the council and the group that you're involved with. And you may not always agree, and maybe that goal that they have versus your goal is in conflict with each other, and so there's some tension that comes about, and they start to get a little more vocal about that. And so you'll have some of that what we refer to as storming. Start to question necessarily what the motives might be involved with people that have a different thought and opinion than I may have on this issue. This, when you get to a storming component, the role of the mayor, the role of the chair or something, to try to keep harmony and to try to keep some sense gets a lot of work, and trying to keep a process together and keeping people at least focused on the importance, but still recognizing the differences there. And so basically, the leader, whether it be a mayor, a chair, or whatever, you know, captain in this case, is involving a submarine, has to play a whole lot of discussion, and they may play a little heavier hand just to make sure that we don't stumble and we can still put the wheels on the wagon and still keep things moving down the road. At some point, most groups will get to a phase called norming, where basically you start to get a handle. You now know who you're working with. You know their background. You may not always agree, but you'll start to get a working relationship. You kind of make things kind of generally where this is the goal of trying to have a common vision, a common direction. If you can agree on that highest level, you may not agree on all the details, but if I can agree with the highest level, we can figure out how to make this work. And so you start to really be more contributory, and you start to be involved, and you start to expressing your thoughts and opinions, and you try to help find common ground. But sometimes, when you get to the norming phase, sometimes you have a little bit of what's referred to as artificial environment. People were afraid to really get into a conflict. They've been through storming, and now they're kind of past that, and they're kind of hard to figure out how to best disagree and disagree without becoming personal in the area. So norming is kind of a building stage, but you're still kind of, sometimes it can be artificial harmony, so to speak, and you really don't deal with the tough issues, because you just don't want to get into that process. Those groups that ultimately get to the highest level is in Tuckman's stage called performing. And this is where, you know, we respect the fact that you all have different thoughts. You have different opinions. We have some common agreements. We can openly discuss conflicts and differences of opinion without it becoming personal and really talk about the merits of our arguments and conversations. Basically, you, the, as the leader, be it the mayor or the leader of the team, they're more in a facilitative role at that. They're not having to kind of keep the channels going, but they want to make sure that people all have an opportunity to be involved with that. And so when you get to that performing function, it's, you've kind of gotten comfortable, but you're willing to have conflict and discussions without it becoming disingenuous or without it becoming destructive, because that's where sometimes that can lead to. We'll talk about some other things later today about how do you handle managing conflict amongst yourselves in an effective way. And so ultimately, now, what I will tell you is that, as you recognize, you may get to a performing stage as a council, and then somebody leaves, they get a job, they relocate, and a new member comes on board. You have elections. board, you have elections. It doesn't take much to shift from a performing to one of the other stages, and sometimes it's with the same group as well. Something will occur, and it shifts you back. An incident occurs, and you've got to kind of work your way through this as well in the process. So that kind of is a background. If I look at where you're at now, this is your thoughts and opinions, if you were to gauge your perception of where the Laredo City Council is at today's point in time, where do you rate yourself? Are you in the forming, storming, norming, or performing? And I recognize you may not all agree. That's, that's part of the conversation as well. So I want to get your thoughts. So where do you, you know, asking that question, what your thoughts are as a group? What stage are you in?
Yeah, let me begin, I guess. Yeah, I think by now, we know each other. We know basically what can take us off. And we kind of respect that, I think, but, but some moments, you know, we forget that, and of course, we, we fall back on the storming function.
Mayor, you're right.
Yeah. And then, and then the norming, but, but we've, personally speaking, I think we've, we've, we've been through the norming, and I love the performing level. And we do hit that, believe it or not, we do hit that.
Okay.
Because we do have unanimous consent on, on some votes. But of course, there's differences, and then, and that's where the storming, we go back to the storming portion of it again. And, and we need to wean ourselves from that storming and just respect that sometimes we may not get our vote. And I've been, and I'll admit that too. At first, it was very, very difficult for me, but, but then again, I was always in the minority. And I, and I, you know, you just accept it, and then you do the best you can with your argument at the next...
Veto and then accept.
Huh?
Veto and then accept.
Veto. You have no choice but to accept. But yet, you have to accept, because that's, that's the will of the council. So anyway, that's, those are my thoughts. Yeah, anyone else?
Mayor pretty much covered it all.
Okay.
I've been through it with you since we came in, we both met at roughly at the same time. You know, I feel, I feel the way you feel.
Yeah. No, we've been through all of that.
We've been through all of that.
And we perform, basically. You know, given what we, and I'm sorry, but given, but what we've gone through, yet, you know, the city has performed. You know, some way, somehow projects get done, programs are initiated. Yes, there's that storming function of it. But overall, you know, we, we've succeeded. But I can only just think that if we could be at the performing level at all times, how much more, you know, we could have done. But yet, is that, is that typical in your...
Absolutely. As I said, groups will, at various points in time, I've worked with some groups that are, that are high-performing, they're working well, and something happens, and they get kicked back to a lower stage. Sometimes we come back to help them. How do they work? All right, you've got a problem, let's work one thing. If you don't pick at a scab, sometimes it doesn't get better. You've got to rip that Band-Aid off or whatever the analogy you want to use to get to it. But sometimes, recognize, you're dealing with important items here. I mean, these are, these are things that affect your constituents' lives, and so you're going to have skin in the game, and you're going to have disagreements. And so, yeah.
Since we brought that topic up, I'm, the consensus that we need to work some of the ugly stuff by ourselves, but, but again, we can't violate the Toma. So that's always a challenge where I can speak maybe to one or two, but I really can't speak to all of them behind, you know, between us, because we can't. It's, we're prohibited. So it's got to be in public, and when you're in public, there's a tendency of performing. You know, you want to perform, grandstand, you, you want to show basically your, your attributes in debate. So, you know, how do we deal with that? Do you have any...
That's a, that's a great question, and I'm going to, I'll tell you, I come from the land of Florida, which is, it's called government in the sunshine. And so, and California and Florida are probably the most strictest in this regard. In Florida, no two council members can meet to talk about an item that potentially can become a legislative item that they'll act upon at some point in the future unless they advertise it as a public meeting. So, only, yeah. So, so in Florida, you, at least here, like many other states, can meet with less than a majority of a council and have those conversations, but you can't have serial meetings. You can't do a three here, three there, and then figure out where you're at, and you go from there. So there are groups that do exactly what you have to do. In my land in Florida, we have to have this type of conversation in public, and we try to, oftentimes, it's working with a facilitator or a group to kind of work through it so it doesn't blow up involving the effort. So it, I, I hear you. Nobody in their right mind would design a system that way if they were trying to be the most efficient with time, because it all means everything has to be done in a public session and, and...
Because no one likes to be criticized publicly.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Absolutely.
And then once it happens, then you're a guard, you know, you've got to respond back somewhere, somehow.
And you don't want to create a problem that creates a relationship challenge in the future.
The natural part of the mayor's comments are very much accurate, right? So we're very good at performing when it comes to our tax rate, making sure our bond projects get done. That impact the entire city. But we get stuck into storming when there's a struggle as to advocating for the individual districts, right? And that usually happens. So if District Seven or Eight, let's just use District Eight as an example, downtown is getting improvement, there's going to be someone that's going to raise their hand and say, wait a minute, if downtown's getting X, why isn't my district getting it? Or if the Heights is getting something, why isn't South Laredo getting it? If, you know, Main Road is getting it, then why isn't, there are loops in South Laredo to help, right? So the performing happens at a citywide level very well, like the mayor mentioned. We come together, even if there has to be a rate increase of some sort, at some point, we figure it out. But it comes to an issue with the storming when there's that struggle between council districts. But then, I also think that there is a big problem when it comes to, for example, let's use this city manager search as an example. And we were, at least in, in my opinion, we were all ready to come and work together, but then there was a public opinion right before the meeting about how council allegedly does things one way or another. No pun intended, Mayor, but that, that came, and it was said, council members, and you excluded yourself from that, where maybe it is our opinion that you too might be part of the problem, as all of us are, right? Not just the council members, right? So sometimes that happens where we're ready to come and perform, but then there's that, maybe one or two or three individuals on council, or one group or another, that will make a public stance that then makes everyone react, right? And then it creates the storm all over again.
Sure.
Right? So I think that's where we have the issues, right? Where we sometimes think individually, we think of our individual political needs at some point that then hinder the actual performance overall.
But I think there's a point too that we need to mention. The city manager allows for this, for whatever reason. You know, if city managers would stick to their, you know, their place, their channel, and say, look, I'm not going to allow this conversation. Sorry, council member, mayor, you know, this is, if you disagree, sorry. But, but I don't see that. They came in, you know, and I know why, for survival.
They need survival.
They want their job, they want to continue with a job, and they think they can appease all these different coalitions.
District counting votes.
And they do, and that's the way it's worked out, with one exception, Keith here at the end. But then again, he's leaving, so...
No, no, it's, well, but no, it's, it's important to note, Mayor, that, for example, in Keith's case, Keith was able to execute very differently than the other council members, because with all due respect, Keith does not need this job. He's retired, and if you wanted to can him for something he did, he really didn't care because he was coming to get the job done.
And that's a value that I see in the next...
But when you, but when you hire a city manager who's in the middle of their career, or still has to take food, put food at their family's table, then they, for whatever reason, obviously want to survive.
I want, I want to speak, I want to speak to that real quick.
And just to wrap it up, I think that the solution to that is kind of what you mentioned yesterday at the council meeting. At one point, there's got to be that guarantee to whoever's going to come in and saying, you're going to get a three-year agreement contingent to performance, right? And there has to be that safety net and not a year-to-year, and we'll see what happens next year. And if you mess up, you're out, or, you know.
First of all, I doubt I would have acted any differently if I was your city manager 10 years ago as I am today. One thing I've, I've, and many people that know me have heard me say this, as soon as a city manager starts counting to five, that's when that city manager needs to go find another job.
See, but you're the first one that I've heard that, to be honest with you. And well, I've heard it from others, but they don't follow that.
They don't execute, yeah.
They don't execute, they, they, you know, they just disintegrate. You're the only one that, that I saw that. But then again, you were turned. I mean, you told us, I'll be leaving within a certain set period of time.
That really, that really in no way altered my behavior.
Okay. No, and you speak personally, and that's, and I respect that.
I would, I would tell you, and Keith's correct, every manager, the nature, it's a hazardous profession. It's just the nature of the game. And at the end of the day, you have to be true to yourself, and you know that you are going to make recommendations that are not always going to be popular, in some cases may be extremely unpopular, but they're the best thing that your instincts and your training are telling you to do. Whether it's a tax increase because you're operating, you've been draining your fund balance, and you're going to put yourself in jeopardy, or whether it's a political decision, it's hot politics, but from the training and background, the manager always has to be willing to say, I'm giving you my best recommendation, and this is why, and here are some options you've got before. And at the end of the day, then policy has to dictate that. But Keith's point, when you're always just counting to whatever the majority is, you're not managing and leading an organization.
Yeah, let me go back a little bit to, and I go back to the city manager. I don't blame council members or even mayors, probably, well, myself, whoever, because I did put a lot of pressure on, on the first two city managers, because I, I felt in my bones and my gut that, that I had to. But I don't blame council members approaching, you know, the city manager and trying to do something, because that's the nature of who we are.
The nature of the beast, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, we are. We're, you know, we're A-type personalities. We, we seek where the power is, and we try to, you know, position ourselves within that, that position, you know, so we can be effective, be it in our minds or whatever our vision is. But yet, it's up to the city manager to say, hey, you're, you're deviating here. You know, this is beyond what I'm meant for, whatever. So he needs to direct this. It's a strong city manager position. He needs to be the strong person here to, to direct us, the mayor and council. Now, he may end up losing his job, but, but, you know, morally speaking, ethically speaking, sometimes we, we, we got to stand for that.
Yeah, most definitely. The other thing that you recognize as we go deeper into the discussions today...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Vanessa.
So just going back to what we were talking about with the qualities of like what Mr. Selman contributed on, is I think that even us as council members, I mean, I think that's one area where we can all agree that it's for the better of the city for all of us to have that same viewpoint, where regardless of our political career or whatever, I mean, sometimes we have to make decisions that people are not going to like. And sometimes people are against something because of the way that we communicate the message. So when it comes to like lowering taxes and things like that, at some point, it's not sustainable for the taxes to get lowered. I mean, people want the balance of the services provided for the taxes paid. And I think sometimes we get so hung up on data like, oh, you know, I lowered the tax rate, or I, I passed X number of, you know, we look at numbers as metrics, and maybe it goes back to the metrics. It's like, not all the metrics should have to be numerical. How many, you know, ordinances did I pass? Or how many, whatever. It's more like the quality of the work that we're doing. And sometimes the public needs to understand that things aren't going to happen as quickly as they want it to, because then they put pressure on us to then put pressure to get things done. So it's kind of a, it's good that we're having this workshop and that the public's engaged, because they can understand that we all have a role to play in the success, because the politicians are pressured by the public, and sometimes we're not pressured by our constituents. We're pressured by other entities, other owners of things that want certain things in our areas that are not in the best interest of the city. And then if you don't go forward with what certain people want, now all of a sudden, you know, there's this whole rally to, you know, get you out of office, or get, you know, your authority undermined kind of thing. So these are things that I've experienced, and that's why I bring it up. And anybody that follows council should know what I'm talking about. These are also issues that we deal with as politicians, but if we all just stay focused on, you know, if we have to raise a rate, then if that's what's going to be best for the city, because we need to build a healthy reserve fund, or we need to look forward 10, 20 years down the line for when we're not around, then those are the decisions that we have to make now, regardless of how they're going to impact us personally, because for the betterment of the city, that's what the city, those are the decisions that the city needs.
Let me go back. I think it's important that we, at least based on the experience that I've got. I've got seven and a half years, and I've been through a few city managers, as you all know. What I've noticed is also too, that if, if the city manager allows, you know, for this, this influence by one or two or three or whoever, council members, and if some way, somehow he, he tries to restrict that or oppose that, then, and again, it's a nature of seeking that power, then this person or persons will seek the assistant city manager, see if they can convince them to, to maybe but the, you know, the city manager, or at least say, through your power, can you help me here? And I know the city manager won't, but maybe you can. And if some way, somehow, if, if that relationship between that assistant city manager and the manager disintegrates as well, then, then they, they migrate to that assistant city manager, and then after a while, it appears that that city manager wants to be manager now. Or, or at least that's, that's the impression I've, I've gotten through the years. So it's very, it's, it's very dangerous. And personally, I go back to the city manager. The city manager has to have full control and loyalty of his team. And if he can't have that, then you're, you're treading on dangerous waters for the, for the entire organization. Or allow, and if that's the way it works, and maybe some other communities where, where council does manage as well with, with the, with the managers, and some way, somehow things get done, and that's a strategy, well, that's fine. But it, but I, I personally haven't seen that, you know, to work good for us. And quite the contrary, it just hurt us.
Yeah, I think somebody...
Oh, okay, yes. Would you identify yourself, please?
For Laredo, my name's Delavie. And I was going to say, we're talking about a strong city manager. So I think that one of the good questions said, as a council, as everyone's in here, the paper should ask is, what attributes should that person possess? We're talking about wanting a strong person that will hold to their convictions, okay? That doesn't mean that they're not open to hearing from council members, that they're not open to hearing from their constituents, that they're not open to hearing from employees. But they have their personal convictions, and they know they want what is best for the city. Again, those characteristics and those attributes that that person must possess need to be decided upon right now, not at the time when you're interviewing, because what happens is, you start interviewing people, you come down to a final list, no, este no me cayó viendo, vives como salía, no. Then we start making it personal. If you start and you stick to the professional characteristics that that person must possess to be an effective city manager, you are on the right track. But those need to be, you need to lay the groundwork right now.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
And this is Rob's coming in. Real quick, how can we lay the groundwork when we have an election coming up, when my characteristics in looking for a city manager might change from future candidates that are sitting here? What I look, Dr. Trevino, Ms. Mares, Ms. Carrero, I have different characteristics for them to look at. I could say, you know what, this is the person that I feel at 100% that I believe will do the best job, but come four months from now, somebody else might think otherwise. And they could say, you know what, I didn't like the way it was going, their characteristic that they chose, because, or his personality, something else. It is how it is, and it is the manager. Everybody wants a person that they believe who could do the best job for them. That's the way I feel.
Well, with all due respect, truly, when I'm talking about characteristics, I'm talking about professional traits. Are they hardworking? Are they, do they have convictions? That, and I don't mean criminal convictions, okay? Do they have convictions that are for the betterment of the city, okay? What is their thought process? Do they just make decisions overnight? Are they easily swayed? Okay, again...
In our, in our industry, the years that I've been here, some decisions have to be made overnight, especially during the COVID years, especially our city manager. He, he doesn't have an hour to think. He had to make decisions, the mayor had to make decisions right there and then. It's something hard. For me, it's hard to justify to say, you know what, out of what, maybe one interview, two interviews that we did, sometimes we didn't even get an interview to hire qualified people. We just went based on recommendations.
But I think the point that you all are trying to make is that it's so important to select the right candidate. I mean, the voter, it begins with a voter. Selecting the best candidate out there based on those characteristics that, that you expressed. And then each candidate brings whatever value system you were raised with or been dealing with throughout your life, and, and you'll apply it, because that's part of your psyche. I mean, that's part of your persona. And so it boils down to the voter, the candidate, and the decisions that the, that the elected person's going to make.
I think we also had somebody else that wanted to speak on it.
I think we also had somebody else that wanted to speak on, on this.
Oh, yes, go ahead. Yeah, would you, well, yeah, we don't have a mic. Go ahead.
You know, I guess two issues that came up that are really important is the fact that, I mean, we, we're obviously not doing a very good job by city managers in less than ten years, so we gotta look at that.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, the second point is the fact is, you know, when you take an oath, you don't take an oath to your districts, even though you wanna represent your districts in the best way possible. You're fiduciary to the city of Laredo, the people of Laredo, because when you're managing the budget, you're managing my money, you know, the money that I go paying every year on my property taxes. We're one of the highest taxing jurisdictions in the state of Texas. What are we, the highest in health services and police and infrastructure? I mean, these are questions that are valid. And I think that's where you don't have to be a meteorologist to know that training is necessary. And we have to fix these problems. And we have founding documents. Section 203 of the charter says, hey, non-interference. The city manager has a job. You can interfere with the job. It detailed it. Yeah, you can talk to him, it even says that, that you can talk to him, suggest that you cannot interfere when it comes to certain things in the city. 303, removal powers that the city council has. You guys have the power to renew the city manager, but that's not exercised really nearly. That's exercised when there's something serious. And these are things that I, I think are important and we need to look at because if we don't follow our own rules, and I'm gonna give you a little bit of analogy, the goal is owned by the citizens of Laredo. The mayor and the council are proof and we have confidence in you guys have to run the election. So, that's, those are the points that I wanted to make.
Thank you so much for those comments.
Let me react to a couple of things that were said by council. Oh, I'm sorry. You might have to jump in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, council member and then we'll go to, to Viviana. Oh, okay. Viviana.
Well, I have a question. What role does the comprehensive plan have in, you mean, the citizens, the council?
Could you speak up a little? I, I think I can repeat the, I, I think I understand where you're coming from in the process, yeah.
The continued progress of the city through city elections.
Sure. So, the, the nature of the question is what's the role of the comprehensive plan that a city adopts, that you ultimately adopt as a council in your planning commission? And, and how that governs the, the play, the dictate, the direction, the future, the development and the way in which you wanna become a city? Is that fair characterization?
How does it help them, the citizens, the council and the city manager?
Okay.
To have the progress that needs to go along with the election?
Sure. So, um, and I, I've gotta have to, cause I know we got a lot of stuff that's coming that's gonna come tomorrow too, so trying to balance the interests.
Could I quickly answer that from my perspective? It, it, you know, given the personalities and, and the history, you know, it could easily go back to the storming. You know, you, you disregard the, the comprehensive plan, no, now it's my will or, or, or their will. It, it comes to wills and, and childish basically behavior, uh, because it, and, and it's, and it's not unprofessional as we know, but that, it, it comes to that point. So, this is why professionalism is so, so, so important. And, and I'm not saying, I mean, we all have, have those attributes, but yet we revert, when it comes to a fight, revert back to, you know, basic instincts, you know, oh, you got me, I'm gonna have to get you back. And it looks horrible because we're the face of Laredo.
Let me, let me react to a couple of things that were said during the process. So, um, I'll take the last one first and then come back to the point that you raised initially as the conversation unfolded. The, um, the comprehensive plan is not a replacement for your strategic vision, but it goes hand in hand with the vision of the organization. What do you want this city to look like and develop and, and, and just over time start to, to, to relate to the bones of your, your community? And so, it generally does have a lifespan. I forget in Texas, I know in Florida, we gotta update ours every five years, sometimes seven years, sometimes ten years, all that gets adjusted. And so, it does represent a stake in the, your flag in the stake of the land about what you want it to be, but there are certainly adjustments and things that are made, but when you deviate, you have to go through a legislative process to deviate from the plan. So, to that effect, it does supersede long-term vision for, for its very nature of what it's trying to do regardless of who's on the board. But there are always methods because just like I said before, uh, it, it is similar to a GPS, you're gonna encounter things that are different. And maybe development, you know, what was envisioned there just can't work and it's been proven over time, you gotta make an adjustment. So, but it does have some legs that go beyond the tenure of a given council.
I'd like to thank the council member, Carrero.
I just wanted to state that we're, that we're talking about a position that we need to set standards and that the, um, the qualifications and it's just such a vital role for our organization, for the city, for council, for the residents, that if, if, if the, if the new election, if, if we're still in the process then, then, then it'll take place, but we can't continue this organize, this, this culture in our organization of, I just feel that having it depend solely on the new election and the new candidates, then we're back in a, then we're back in the culture of, oh, well, I hired you, I can fire you. Like, let's just move away from that. We need to set a standard. This is a position that needs, I mean, we, we're an organization that needs to operate at a high level and make decisions and move forward. And it's, there, I mean, I completely agree with Sulema that we, you know, we need to move forward.
Yes, sir. Mr. Caso, yes.
I think it's a real bad idea if you all hire a city manager before the new council comes in, okay? Because you're gonna, you're gonna create a faction, an unintended faction that's gonna come in. That's gonna be the campaign rallying cry that you all hired somebody, especially since you've already gone through five city managers in seven years. And that'll be the campaign rallying cry. And this new faction is gonna come in. You'll, you will, what you will be doing is forming a new faction, unintended, and that faction will come in and they will have the power. And you don't want that. You don't want a faction that have the power. I've been through that and you don't want that. You'd rather have it, you and I spoke, mayor, you'd rather have the power diffused, you all come as a deliberative body and you, and you debate, which is what you're supposed to be, do. You're supposed to debate. But if you all hire somebody right now, it's gonna be a terrible mistake because you're actually having six new members, that are five new members that are gonna come in and you're forcing them to work with somebody that you all hired, the five of you all that are leaving. And you know what's gonna happen? That city manager's gonna get fired real quick. I'm telling you right now, it's gonna happen. And you just need to face reality because it will happen. And another problem that I've had is that you all have abdicated your responsibility because of the five things that you all are supposed to do is adopt the budget, adopt the tax rate, sit, hire a city manager, and then expend those resources as, as they're allocated in the budget by establish, and then establish metrics to see if you're exceeding the budget or not. But you abdicated your own responsibility when you went through an ad hoc committee that was, you all just put a bunch of cronies there, political cronies. And I'm telling it the way that you put people who sit on the board of LISD that have no right to be selecting a city manager. He can go select a superintendent, but not a city manager. And that's just wrong by doing that. And so, the whole process was tainted and I can go down the line, everybody that was on there, with the exception of Ivan Rodriguez, but everybody else's work was, that was on that list had some political connection. You all should hire, should review all the resumes and you all hire, forget the ad hoc committee, you don't need it. That's what we put you all there for. So, you all do that. But you should wait till the new council comes in because you're gonna create a faction and you're not gonna like what's gonna happen. And that will be the campaign rallying cry, I'm telling you right now. You'll hire somebody, especially since you've already gone through five city managers in seven years. Right now, no, nobody, nobody believes, nobody has any confidence in it. So, that's basically what I wanted to come and tell you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Caso.
If I may, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. You know, we're, we're, we're not in a rush. We're not in a rush. It's, someone's gonna take time, uh, looking out for the business that's gonna start letting people know that we're looking for our city manager. I don't expect it to take a month, two months, three months. I literally expect it to take time. It's gonna take time, especially with our interviews. But unfortunately, we don't live in a perfect world. So, if it should come, and it just came up last night during, during the council meeting, Marte brought it up, and if that perfect candidate should come about, let's just say three months, three and a half months down the line, right before the election, you know, if, if we see that, I, I would hope that we'd have your all's support, that we could bring that great candidate in, if it should be just before that, the election, you know? We don't know, you know, when we're gonna find the great candidate.
Let's say you, let's say you hire, you know, Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
My wife would never let me do that. No, no, let's say, let's say he's a guy, well, you know what, I'm sure everybody's gonna like it.
Right, right, exactly.
But by hearing you all last night, and I didn't like what I was hearing, it sounds to me like you all already have in mind who you want. And let me tell you, there's rumors are already out there. The rumors are already out there as to who you all wanna put, and some of these folks aren't qualified.
I'd like to know, who, who have you heard?
You really want me to mention here?
Yes, please. Who have you heard? Because this is news to me.
One of them is Auget.
Do you wanna open the door?
He doesn't, you know, you wanna go there, we can go there. Whatever's George Auget, that's one of the rumors, okay? He doesn't have, he'd be in violation of the charter. Provisions will not allow him to get high.
Right, right, no.
And then there's other people, you know, from the school districts. I'm telling you what people are saying, people, you know how Laredo is? Chief Smith travels.
This is news to me, that's why.
Well, Chief Smith in Laredo travels faster than lightning. And it always, you know, it goes in one ear, comes out, but I'm just telling you what people are saying.
Right.
So, so that you all are aware that once the public feels that the process is tainted, you've already lost.
We lost confidence, exactly.
Yes, right.
And that's primarily why we wanna hire this, this particular, particular company to start looking out.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with starting the search process now.
We're not in a rush, just starting the search process. It could take, it could take us a year, a year and a half. We're not in a rush. We wanna get the right person in here.
If it was someone like Mr. Thomas, well, great, you know, but, but the odds are that, you know, I hear, well, why doesn't, why isn't it, it needs to be a local.
Right, no.
I've heard that.
No, it, it, it can be from anywhere, really, as long as we've got the right person here. And I can guarantee you that every single person sitting up here wants the best for Laredo. We might want it in a different way, a different, a different faction, but we're thinking about different ways, but we all want what's best for the city. Every single one of us do. That's why we ran for office.
Well, anyway, I just wanna air my concerns about that.
Can I make one, one quick comment right now that Mr. Caso, um, is, is bringing this up as well and with what council member Gutierrez mentioned? Yesterday, there, there was a comment made during the council meeting that also was kind of bothering at least to me, I don't know to the rest of the council. But it was mentioned, um, when the new city manager comes in, um, we will have a brand new management team. And I think that this council needs to also refrain from that because we're already in a way setting the tone for whoever's going to apply and implying we're expecting that you come in here and you clean house, right? We need to allow whoever gets the city manager's job to utilize the current team that's here right now if they feel they need them in the interim so that they could give continuity to existing projects. Because if someone new comes in that doesn't know the city, doesn't know our priorities and brings in a new team, it's gonna take that group probably a year to start catching up to finances and pending projects, right? But overall, what I'm trying to mention is this council needs to refrain from making any comments like that, that are going to already start putting that seed into whoever's applying. I already have to go in there and clean house in the management team. If not, I'm not gonna have certain amount of council members or the mayor happy, right? So, that's just a suggestion I'm making. Let's not imply that because I started getting phone calls today from directors saying, so y'all are expecting for the new city manager to fire the ACM and the deputy? Does that mean they're also gonna clean house with us? And it's creating a very unhealthy environment within the city.
Yeah, the flip side to that is that, uh, we're assuming that the city manager is not capable, you know, he doesn't have that capacity to, you know, to, to evaluate quickly, you know, the circumstances that we have here in the city and that he may, or he may not, he may, or she, no, yeah, I'm sorry, he or she. So, let's, let's not, you know, it can go either way.
Also notice.
But, but keep in mind to the fact that, that we're advocating that maybe, you know, some should stay, you know, takes us back to that same situation.
No, no, it's not an advocacy. It's let the person come in, do what they've gotta do, right? If they wanna keep them, they can also get rid of them, they're our employees.
And that's the point that I'm trying to make. Let the city manager manage, you know?
Exactly.
And, and, and if he wants, he or she wants.
And a new city manager's not gonna wanna come in if he's at all sane and he reads the papers. He would not wanna come in until the new council comes in because he knows his job's gonna be in at risk, okay? And the other thing I was gonna say is when I was in the council, what you're speaking about, Councilman Torres, you're right. When we were there, I was in the minority for two years. And I'll be honest with you, it took me two years to work it. And then our group came in and we got rid of the, I made the motion, get rid of the city manager. And the new city manager came in, he got rid of every department. I didn't tell him what to do, he just did it.
We need to move on. I think there's, there's Ms. Cabeo and I think there's the lady in the venue.
I would wanna make it clear to the public, I am currently a deputy city manager, um, twenty-three plus years of experience, not only in finance, but in other areas, interpretations, matches, etc. I wanna make sure that the public knows that the sky is not falling, that we have the people behind you, that we are ethical, that we're hardworking, that we understand finances, that we understand operations. We and I are still here, so please understand and be confident that we will do a good job under the new manager. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cabeo.
Jackie Ramos, uh, for the record, I'm not running for anything. I'm here as a taxpayer. Really, I'm here as a fellow colleague. I've worked with many of you before in different capacities. And what I noticed and what has worked for us, and I'm proud to say that as a college board member, trustee elected by the people, we had this same situation when we were looking for a president a couple of years ago. Not this time around, but we did select an executive search firm and that provided us with insight, direction, timeline. I agree, there's pros and cons about picking somebody right here, right now. You don't, you don't pick somebody out from the street. A city manager is picked diligently, you establish your, your roles, what roles do they wanna play within the city government? And more than anything, a city manager comes to be able to be the leader for you that you need. As an elected official, you're gonna depend on that leader to guide you to the right place. We've seen the, the different topics that we've come about. And, and you know, when I first started as a trustee, I had no idea what a trustee did, but I learned and I experienced it and I researched it and I went back and forth. And the first thing that I noticed is my job is for the people. They elected me, but as collectively, I'm, as a single person, I'm nobody, really. Collectively, as a group, my group, including Ms. Mares and other people that are on the board with me, we make a team and we form that team because we depend on administration to help us run the organization. And so, and I depend on the employees, but yet I don't get involved with any of the employees. I do agree that we can start with your vision, mission and goals and the individuals who are here right now, for example, Dr. Martinez, Vidal and Rudy, you play a pivotal role in establishing what you wanna foresee as the legacy that you wanna leave behind. Because what are you looking for in a city manager, right? So, what is it that you would like to see collectively right now as a group? What are some of the ideas that you're looking for, right? And so, that doesn't mean that you all are gonna hire. It might happen, it might not happen, right? But finding the right person for the city also depends on each one of you individually because like Mr. Thomas said, what is your, what is, uh, what is the vision that people see about you individually and then collectively as a group, right? We can wait till the new, uh, people come in or maybe we end up with the same people, right? Like in certain cases, there's some people that are running for reelection, maybe, right? But in this case, you can start building the foundation, what is it that you want to see? And in the meantime, you have an interim, and Mr. Selman, thank you very much for being a good public administrator and a good city manager for our city for the time that you were here with us, but you have people working for you. So, those people are gonna guide you along the way. Then we set aside politics because it's really hard. People can tell you everything they wanna tell you. They wanna tell you how to run businesses, how to do this and how to do all this stuff, but at the end of the day, you're the one that's in the hotspot, you know? You're the one that's in that spot. And so, together, come together and think of ideas of what you want for this city, for us, for the community. As a taxpayer, I'm not here because I'm running, I'm here because this is, I believe in the city. If not, I would've left a long time ago because there are exploratory options for me to go up to other cities, but yet something seems to pull me down and it's not politics.
No, it's the water.
It's actually the love I have for the city, right?
You drank the water.
that the executive search firm is one of the great ideas that you might be able to work collectively and find that manager that you want for the city.
Mayor, I just wanted to add to that.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
I just wanted to add that the needs of the city and the district, if we're really doing what we should be doing, and knowing what the issues are within our own districts, and within the city, those needs don't change with us. Like regardless of who is here, those needs are still gonna be here. So, it's our job to identify them and work on them, but at the same time, the decisions that we make should still carry over with the new people, because the needs and everything is still gonna be there. So, that's where I'm kind of thinking that we just continue to move forward, and let's see what happens, right? But the needs and, and, and the city direction, and all of the goals and everything, I think we need to, um, you know, just keep in mind that, that those things are not gonna change with the individual person, unless the individual person has other interests that they wanna pursue that are not necessarily in line with the, uh, the known needs of the district, so.
Yeah, let me go back to, if I may also, on, on the question of loyalty and allegiance by assistant manager to the manager. You know, I've, I've been there seven and a half years, and it starts strong, but it starts waning. Starts waning, and, uh, and that's, that's, that's when the troubles begin. And, uh, so I, I, I can see it from the city manager's perspective that he needs a hundred percent, or something very close to a hundred percent loyalty, uh, because he's gonna depend on those people to, to, to build him up, uh, to hold him there. And, uh, and if he can't get that, those people aren't deserving of, of being next to him, you know, because they're vital to his team, him or her team. Uh, and, and, and it's structured that way as a city manager, so he needs full support, and knowing full well that, that people are gonna, you know, try to, you know, infiltrate, the council members, mayors, you know, try to, you know, push their way in. But they have to hold that line, if, if that line doesn't hold, and I've seen it break time and time again, uh, we're gonna end up in the same situation. So this is why the city manager needs to evaluate who's with him, you know, his team, and he needs to feel down deep that, that they have his best, his, her best interest in mind, because really, he's the guy that's gonna get fired, huh?
So, let me, at the risk of trying to bring you back to, to where I, I'm trying to get you as a group, um, a couple of things have been said. So I'm gonna say first things first in the process, as it relates to the timing of the issue. I know we're gonna spend more time on that tomorrow. I've got several suggestions that will allow you to consider with regards to existing council, as well as new council, and that can involve surveys, and things, and reback, and listening sessions that can be done with your community. There's a way to make this happen without necessarily kicking a search off tomorrow. And you can build that background, because as several of your speakers and several of you have said, there's certain traits and issues and things that aren't gonna go away, regardless of who's sitting on your, on the dais. And you can build that into the background to make sure there's a consensus of where you think the challenges and issues will be. We're gonna spend a whole lot of time on that tomorrow, so I just wanna say, I'm not here today saying you should start and advertise tomorrow, you know we're close to that. You're nowhere close to that, given all the other dynamics that are at play with regards to elections. But believe me, we've worked with communities and navigated almost anything you can throw at us, we've seen and can give you what works and what doesn't work, and, and takes that into account. So please, I just wanna set that point to the side, 'cause I know it's a, it's an either war. There's ways you can do both, including selection of semifinalists, but waiting till finalists are on board after the, the new council gets a chance to select. There's, I don't wanna get labored on that today, but I wanna let you all know, we, I hear you, I understand it, I'm with you, um, we do this, we can tell you how you can navigate that, and I think to a successful conclusion that allows you to all have some pieces of that, that ownership in the process. So, just bear with me on that, I'm, I'm gonna get back to that, so, but I thought it'd be important to tell. I wanted to get back to the point you just raised that started this, was, was about the, so, the reason we're spending today talking about governance is, I can't stress enough, how you govern will dictate the quality of the candidates you get. And I realize, I'm speaking to the group that's here today, and there may be new members coming on board, I don't know what that all looks like, that all shake itself over time. But as people start to think about the search, they're gonna start to do homework on you. And they're gonna look at that, and that halo impact of five managers in less than ten years is gonna be an impact, and they're gonna say, that's why we're spending today on governance, because it matters. And, and no matter where you're at now, you may be able to do some things that can help shore that up to have some people that might be on the fence down the road, thinking, "I might apply, but I don't know, what's that look like?" Um, so that's why we're gonna talk about governance, that it is so critical. It's not just about you running the organization, it is the lens in which any prospective candidate will look at this organization. So that's why we're really spending talk about governance. So, getting back to this, the culture, when you talked about kind of working with an ACM or working with a department head, I mentioned earlier about organizational values. Most organizational values will dictate the culture of the organization. What you described is not a healthy organization, where the undercutting of supervision will be detrimental to the long-term success of the organization. So when I talk about governance today, and some of the things we're discussing, and I'm gonna use Patrick Lantiani as part of our example, um, much of that also relates to the way in which a manager runs his or her organization. And so, recognizing the culture of the organization, and how you deal with conflicts and differences of opinion matter, not just for you, but how the manager ultimately runs the organization, you know it's focused to you here as well. And so, that is a culture in an organization you've described that does not deal with differences of opinion in a healthy fashion. And so, when that happens, you've gotta get people, they gotta be on the same hymn sheet. Otherwise, somebody's always singing out a key, and guess what, the choir doesn't sound very good. So, you know, that's, that type of issue is, is not a healthy governance organization at the council level, and it's certainly not healthy at the administration level. So, just keep that in mind. So that goes back to the effort of, what do you stand for as an organization? Is that type of behavior tolerated, accepted, or encouraged? Or is that type of behavior saying, "It's not gonna happen here"? That will also dictate the type of candidates that you're looking at as well. The other thing, I wanted to go back, and I realize this seemed like it was a long time ago, but there was this discussion about district versus the, as a whole. And I was a, like a secret shopper, I don't know if any of you recognized, I popped in last night to catch a little bit of your council meeting, since I was in town, to get a chance to see how you were operated as a board, and see you in action. And you had the presentation on solid waste, so it immediately brought me back to an example, um, that in my former community, we were moving towards a, we did our own trash service, we were moving towards a process of ASL, automated side loaders, and we wanted to have RFID technology for the, the, all the, all the bells and whistles in the process. And in Lakeland, similar to you, we have a historic area, or several historic areas, that traditionally had been serviced with their trashcans coming in the back alleys. Now, many of these homes could put their trashcan in the front of the curb, where the major ASL trucks could come and pick it up, just like all the other ones. But there were, you know, there was a lot of tradition and issues taking place there. And in Lakeland, our districts, we had seven members, there, there were four that were elected at, by district, they had to reside in the district, two that were at large, and the mayor was elected at large, but everybody in Florida votes for everybody regardless of what district you're in. So it's a little bit different dynamic than you have here. But the point I wanna raise is that we had a policy, our organizational policy was that everybody paid a fair share for the services they get. So, as a city manager, and this is the role that Keith or all of us play, you're saying, "All right, we have two options. We can require those folks that live in those historic districts to put their, to wheel their carts out to the front curb like everybody else, and that may be more inconvenient, because they're used to having it out the back porch on the alley or whatever. But alternatively, our side loaders, the new side loader trucks we're gonna get, couldn't go down the alleys. So we had to get specialized piece of equipment. So I said, as a city manager, your policy is this, you're supposed to recover your cost in, in an equitable fashion, here's the way of doing that. You charge a different rate for those historic districts that want to have that type of service, but they pay a higher freight in order to have a truck come down the alley, but it was a smaller truck, required different type of operations and people and all that, and it was a different cost, so we said, "Here's the cost." That was my recommendation as a manager, you've got two options. You either, everybody brings it to the curb, or there's a different fee. Now, obviously, the members that came from those historic districts felt pretty strongly about, "Hey, this is my area, this is theirs." The way that happened was, is there was a public conversation, and there was ultimately a decision made by the entirety of the council, that said, "Okay, we're gonna basically subsidize that historic area, because there, we feel that's an important element to retain that culture and issue." As a manager, it didn't make a difference to me, I was gonna, you just had to cover the cost, here are some options together, and that's just an example of ultimately how a council that I work with, and an issue that you're facing now, you, the same sort of issues downtown, carts and rates and all that, you have to have the conversation. And at the end of the day, you'll do what's hopefully best for the interest as a whole, but the manager is gonna give you those options to say, "Here's the way you can do it. You can do it this way, you can do it this way, here's what your policy says, you gotta cover your costs, let's talk through the issues." So, then you have to hash it out as a legislative matter. So that's, that's just an example, that every issue you deal with may have an issue like that, has a different impact in a certain district, you have to understand that, you have to talk through it as a board, then you're gonna make a decision, and you move on from there. But you don't try to influence, say, "It's, it's only gonna be this way," because there's nine of you, and you're gonna have different thoughts and opinions about it. And at the end of the day, as someone said here, you know, I'm a taxpayer, you know, how, what's fair and equitable? So, you know, it may not have been the perfect solution, but I thought it was a timely discussion relative to the issues you deal with, how you make that distinction between district and, and citywide as a whole.
Thank you.
Anyway, um, I spent a whole lot more time on that one, I thought, but that's okay, we'll work our way through here, so. Um, I thought it would be helpful, when I do these types of governance workshops, I always go back to your, your founding document, which is your charter. Um, so I thought it'd be helpful to just take some excerpts to make sure everybody was on the same page. Um, it's not material everybody reads every day, maybe some of you read it, maybe some of you are more familiar than others, whatever the case would be. But I wanna just walk through some key principles that I think is important to know as elected official, but also the roles and responsibilities, and kind of the swim lanes that everybody operates in. And so I spent some time looking at your charter. Um, clearly, um, so the impacts, and I'm working from the beginning of the charter to the end, so this may seem out of place, but I'm starting at the beginning. So the first, the first part of the charter, section 203, prohibitions. Um, the, um, the city council should not in any manner dictate the appointment or removal of any city administrative officer employee who the city manager or any subordinates are empowered to appoint or remove, but the city council may express its views and fully, freely discuss with city manager anything pertaining to the appointment or removal of such officers and employees. And then the second piece of that is interference with the administration, except for the purpose of, of inquiries, obtaining information regarding problems, services, investigations, et cetera, et cetera. Um, basically, they're under the control and the subject of the city manager. So when you think about this, what this is, I'm going back to the point. You, you hire a manager as a chief administrative officer of your organization, and he or she has the authority to run the organization, run the operation on your behalf. But getting back to the issue that you raised, Mayor, you know, you have a culture that you're trying to build, and a team that's all singing from that same hymn sheet in the process. And once again, that distinction, just like in strategic visioning, your role is at that visioning, high-level policy issue, it's not in the day-to-day functions. Now, that's not to say, many managers, you know, our profession is probably about a hundred and thirty years old now, Keith, something like that, I believe, it used to be this straight line, where the administration and the policy was here. And the city council was here, and the city manager was here, and the lines never crossed. It's, you know, that's what it is, you got the day-to-day, we got the big stuff. We approve the budgets, we appoint you as a manager, we may appoint some other approval, hiring of some other individuals, for the most part, the day-to-day function falls under the purview. Most councils, and under your charter, it's more like, it's kinda like the yin and the yang, you know, where you see, where there's a little bit of both. Now, that doesn't mean, and the CM, and the city council's over here, at the end of the day, a good city manager is gonna, you're gonna have a special, you by your very nature have a special relationship with the community, because you're elected. Managers are not, they're appointed. And so, you're gonna hear and see and have opinions on things that may be different than the manager. So, that's where you may have a thought about the way we're running a program, and you're gonna kinda say, "Hey, I've got some thoughts and opinions about that", but at the end of the day, the manager's still gonna run it. So it doesn't mean you can't exercise your thoughts and opinions, but it's within the boundaries of policymaking as a whole. I don't think we're doing that well, I'm hearing a lot of concerns, I'm hearing concerns or complaints, that sort of thing. On the flip side, the manager is certainly gonna understand the day-to-day functions there, but he or she is also gonna say, "Listen, not my first rodeo, if you do this, this is the stuff that might happen, that might be an unintended consequence." So even though the manager's not exercising policy, they're giving you their best instinct to help you become better policymakers. So that's why that yin and the yang is important, but they never cross over. They're not the, they're not the tenth council member. They're there to exercise, saying, "This is a policy call, here's where I think you ought to go, and here's the pluses and minuses of those options, at the end of the day, it's your decision." So they don't step into the line to try to influence the policy, but they're giving you the benefit of saying, "I've been in this business a while, I can tell you what's probably wrong with that, and here's some ways to maybe adjust it if you only go that way, but at the end, it's your call, it's not my call." Type of thing. Same way with you, if you see a service, or a program, or a function that's not working well, you're, it's appropriate for you, once again, to act through the manager, to talk about, "Hey, I've got some concerns about this, but I realize, at the end of the day, you're the one, you're accountable to us as a whole, not me individually, okay? You following that?" So anyways, that's what this, these first charter sections are about. Basically, setting up the round and the roles and responsibilities of there. So, some other charter provisions. Certainly, as the mayor, it gets a little bit different, you get to help involve in the day-to-day functions of, of putting the agenda together and the relationship that takes place, so that's certainly articulated in your charter as well. Um, some other positions that come forward, you've got a unique charter in the sense that some of your positions, the manager recommends, and, and appoints, some of them, they just appoint, it's a little bit all over the lot, depending on, so I, you know, not, I'm not here and there, it's just, it is what it is, so there's, there's probably history behind it. But certainly, the manager recommends to you, um, a confirmation of vote, requiring at least five of you. Uh, but after that's done, then reports to the, to the mayor, or the manager, excuse me. So that's a little bit of a kind of shared responsibility there, but basically, after you've made that appointment, the day-to-day functions fall of the secretary to the manager. Um, city attorney, um, many times, many times we'll see charter officers, I call them charter officers, most of the time, the city manager, city secretary, sometimes internal audit, and city attorney are normally the four charter officers, and sometimes there's district court things and things like that. Um, so in this case, in a similar way, the city manager, in this case, appoints the ma, the city attorney, subject to a confirmation. Um, and then, for a change to occur, it requires a recommendation of the manager with an affirmative vote. So that's a little bit different, as I say, different structure, I just, it was interesting to see different positions have different appointing and removal responsibilities. Uh, the clerk of the municipal court, nominated by the city manager, then confirmed, uh, and then basically handles the day-to-day functions of their operations. Um, as it relates to the compensation, or the comp, I'm sorry, that's not, that's appointment and compensation, I'm sorry, that's right, that's a provision. So, at the end of the day, as I said at the beginning of this, one of the most important things you do as an elected body is appoint a manager. And you set there, you fix their terms and their benefits and things of that nature. Your charter has outlined a section of qualifications.
Can I go back to the appointments and the evaluation by council?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah, before we move in, 'cause I'm gonna be largely dealing with the, the manager at this point.
Yeah, okay. I, he has some observations too, uh, yeah, anytime you involve the council approval or confirmation up and down, or whatever, uh, there's, there's a tendency to, you know, to get political. And it does get political. And so, so the, the candidate or the person, you know, vying for that job, you know, obviously, uh, needs to impress, you know, council members, and mayor. And, uh, so I've, so my unsolicited advice is, don't get political, you know, because people are watching, especially the, you know, maybe the poor people that, that didn't vote for you, you know, uh, may, you know, may look at you a little, little, a little harder. Uh, and, but that's the nature, that's, that's the way the charter reads.
That's the way your charter reads.
But, but also too, once, once you're appointed, don't get political, you know, don't side, if people come and they, you know, don't, and, and this is just me speaking, if, if you wanna keep your job, you know, don't agree with, you know, people can talk and this and that, but once you take sides, and especially sides where, uh, council is divided, then you're just asking for trouble.
Yeah, that's why. Most, in many organizations, charter officers, the appointing authority, the hiring authority, the, the evaluation for those charter officers typically resides with the council. But you've got kind of a blended circumstance, where the manager has to recommend them, sometimes after they're appointed, then the firing can be done by the man. It, it's, it's a, it's a unique blending of, of what, I don't typically see that in charters, I'll put it this way, but every charter is unique based upon the history and the dynamics that occurred there. But I just thought it'd be helpful to point out, so everybody understands what the roles are, unless you make some charter changes in the future. But to your point, Mayor, there are some unique blending of appointment and removal authorities and oversight responsibilities in some of your, your positions that, that quite frankly, create some probably challenges, um, from, from a clean administrative standpoint. But that, I'm not here to say you change your charter, I'm just pointing out what it is.
And I'm just mentioning observations that I've seen, yeah.
So, let's talk a little bit about the big section, we focus a lot about this, uh, the section that deals with the city manager, so, in the process. So, obviously, you've gotta have five votes to appoint them. Um, the way your charter is written is for an indefinite term, and you set a confirmation. We'll talk tomorrow about different terms and benefits of that, but we often see that. Indefinite terms are not uncommon in many charters that we deal with as well. Um, your charter also specifies, uh, under section 302, some basic response, or basic qualifications. So in this case, I have a master's degree, oh, I'm sorry, um, he or she shall have a master's degree or no less than eight years, um, eight years of experience in government, economic development, or other government-related field, five of which must be supervisory managerial experience, a master's degree in public administration is preferred, and the manager not, not be. the manager not be, need not be a resident of the city at the time appointment, but at some point will reside within the city as part of the office. And then, the removal, also, and charters would typically have this process, be removed at the will, they typically are an at-will employ, so they represent, as I said, hired and fired with enthusiasm, but not always by the same boards. So, and their process, it takes a certain number of people, of votes in order to do this as you go forward. So, overhaul, that's, those things don't concern me, those are generally acceptable parameters that you see when you get into the duties and powers of the manager.
Can we go back to?
No, wanna go back, I'm sorry, yeah, go back, yeah.
Yeah, important point here. Yeah, for example, on the removal, I know you mentioned that maybe.
Right, so, I think that, you know, we've discussed how the removal is sometimes an issue, right? You piss off five council members, now you're afraid you're gonna lose your job, and maybe this council should consider a charter amendment for the removal to be a supermajority.
I've seen that in some places as well, council member, absolutely.
That way, it's not just the will of five, but maybe the will of seven, or the will of six.
Six, the super, the six of eight, yeah.
But also, going back to the term, I know, you know, we have indefinite, you know, time period, and this is what.
And that should be for all appointed positions, to address your point. You know, it should be a supermajority so that those other appointed officers can also execute their jobs without any fear of retaliation from a majority of five, you know, counting votes, right? So, I think we should consider a super.
Senate amendment, six of the eight council member, right?
Going back to the term, I know we.
But it's not the mayor up there, it's just.
Well, we should, the mayor should, I think the mayor.
Yeah, I think I voted on, I've got at least a fifth vote, you know, I think mayors in the future would wanna have a vote on that too.
Well, out of nine council, it should be supermajority.
Six, six or seven or nine?
Seven out of nine.
Seven out of nine.
Yeah, and it, for me, it appears to be a unique scenario where a mayor has no voice in the hiring of the city manager.
Yeah.
Say that again, Keith.
I've not seen a scenario where a mayor has no voice in the hiring of a city manager.
Or attorney or any member.
Yeah, for some reason, the mayor doesn't get to vote there.
Yeah, I think maybe that's. Because of the inherited problem that we're seeing, yeah, way back before, and, you know, maybe for the same alleged reasons that council medals will, they don't want the mayor to be the one to medal as well, I guess, that's the.
And I've had that argument, and I've been taken to the ethics commission on that, and I've, I got free speech, you know, political speech, I gotta speak up, you know, you run on a certain platform, and then you can't vote on it.
Well, the mayor is part of the council, so if you're talking about confirming or removing, what's.
The office of the mayor is independent of the council, of the city council, right?
It's defined out separately.
Yeah, the charter defines the mayor and the council.
Okay.
Whenever it says five council members, that literally means five council member votes. Whenever it says the city council.
Right, he's part of the city council, but he's not one of the council members.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, he's not a council member, but he's part of the council.
But the charter has areas where it talks about council members or the council, and areas where the mayor differentiates between us and.
I know, it's confusing.
Okay, so anyway, I think that's a good point to bring up at some point. Can we go back to the term, and this is going back to the discussion?
You think it's clear, though?
Going back, I'm sorry.
It's clear?
Different parts, and just in case you're wondering, you can have a charter, you know, review commission every two years, and that two years will come up in November.
We need a whole new workshop for this.
So, you can have one as early as November this year.
No, that's fine. Going back to the term, I know we've spoken about giving, creating a space, a safe space for the city manager, but the term calls for an indefinite term, which basically is ongoing, you really, and if we wanna, you know, capture possibly a two-year, three-year term to, for him to have at least some protection, him or her, then, then I think the charter needs to be changed to a definite or indefinite, you know, depending on what council decides at the time.
Or give the council the ability to give contracts not to exceed three years.
Or some, yeah, but. Let me, let me, let me get, and to your point, there's probably a whole different session under your charter in terms of provisions and what, so, what I can tell you is, based on my experiences being in the profession as well as what I see, because obviously, every time I'm doing a recruitment, I'm looking at the charter and seeing that, so we see a lot of different charter provisions. The indefinite term does not scare me or candidates away, because what it mean, I mean, so, the average tenure of a manager nationally is about five to seven years. For every, for every five to seven-year manager, though, there's a number of folks like myself that spent 12 years in my last city and 15 years in my previous city. I executed an agreement, I never went back to look at that agreement until we needed to change something, and it wasn't like I didn't live on that process.
So, the agreement was year to year, or what was?
It was basically appointed, in some cases, I've had some where they were a three-year term and we had to go back and do it, but in most cases, they're indefinite. It's not uncommon to do that now.
Indefinite with annual performance evaluations?
Yes, annual performance, and so, regardless, and this is the reason being, so, since we write a lot of contracts on behalf of our clients to help as you're negotiating with your final candidate, this typically is not like the NFL. If I got a five-year agreement, I get cut in year one, I'm still gonna get four years paid out. Most manager agreements don't have that. So, managers recognize that you get, at any given time.
Can you go back, because obviously, there is a, it's frowned upon what we call in our community, or maybe in the industry, the golden parachute, right?
Severance agreements.
Or severance, right, here it's called a golden, or preferred to as a golden parachute, right, by the community, and that has also created, I guess, a lack of interest, and sometimes in applicants is what we've heard, because of the track record the city has of the revolving door of city managers.
Sure, yeah.
So, you're telling us that it is not uncommon to not offer a golden parachute?
Oh, no, I didn't say that at all. I'm saying, in the term, I see many of my agreements that we negotiate on behalf of clients with the city, but bringing parties together that are indefinite, I see others that are three years or five years, whatever the case would be.
But severance.
What I'm saying is that regardless, if it's a five-year agreement, the nature of the position of city management is they are at-will employees, and the council always has the ability to make a change. You may require that to be a supermajority or something, so it's not just on the will, but.
Based on your experience, is a severance package common?
I will tell you, you will not get a, in the smallest and most stable forms of government, severance agreements are common. In a position like you've got here, where you've had this turnover, you won't get anybody without a severance agreement. I'll just be candid. What that looks like and the terms and conditions, we can talk through, but there's no city manager probably of interest of being a professional city manager that's gonna step into this environment without some sort of severance. And think about it from the standpoint of them, they're about to pick up and move themselves, their family to a new community, potentially, if you're hiring from outside the area, they're gonna stake their professional reputation on the dynamics of being able to accomplish what you want, and as I said before, managers are hired and fired with enthusiasm, but not always by the same board. So, I can do everything that you wanted me to do at the date I've been hired, and two years later, a different board's in place, and they wanna go in a different direction. Managers always, even if the manager isn't removed, they have to make a value judgment of looking in the mirror and saying, do I agree with where this community is going and the political leadership wants to take it? And if they do, they'll continue to stay and work and make those adjustments. If they say, I don't agree, then more often than not, they're looking for the next opportunity. Sometime, they're not given that opportunity, the next council comes in, they just wanna make a change for whatever reason, and managers understand that's the nature of the profession, but as a result, have a severance agreement to go forward. And severance agreements will look and feel, it all depends on the dynamics of the parties involved. But I will tell you, in 150 city manager searches I've done the last seven years or so.
Everyone offers a severance.
They all, they all, they all have severance agreements.
Yeah, let me ask you this, have you seen a, you know, say, for example, three years, I know the three-year term has been thrown out there, can we structure something three year with some guarantees that unless for egregious reasons, you know, he'll be fired by a supermajority, but short of a political pettiness or whatever, you know, he cannot be fired?
I'm gonna say, I am not an attorney, I get accused of being that when my city attorneys that I've worked with over the years as well, there's always a healthy relationship between attorneys and managers. Generally, you can negotiate things to the subject that you've got state and local authority to do it. Yeah, so, there's, the provision, I think what you're getting at, regardless of what it looks and feels like, you don't wanna just simply be willy-nilly about, especially given the dynamic you face with the turnover in this position. You wanna provide some level of security that, hey, if I'm doing my job, because I can tell you right now, every manager makes decisions that are not gonna be politically popular, they don't wanna be, you know, they're gonna make that because of who they're trained and what they wanna be, and they're gonna wanna have some reasonable insurance, they recognize they may get terminated by a new board, but in the same token.
But that's my point.
Being terminated for the right reasons.
Maybe the new board cannot terminate unless for egregious reasons.
Well, here's what I've seen done in that, Mayor, in many cases, now we're into the weeds on that, but what I've seen is, in some severance agreements, that if a council is, if a manager is terminated within so many months after a new council is constituted, they have a kicker in their severance that's just greater. So, in other words, it makes it more painful to simply appoint or remove someone just because.
But contractually, we can structure something, can we?
Subject to what your charter and your state laws may say, yeah.
I can structure the, anything you want, but it sounds to me, because I like business, I study it, but it seems that we're talking about agency problem, you know, where the interests of the individual is opposite of that of the organization. And so, whatever you wanna write, if you can keep that, that agency issue at hand, I think that's maybe what you're talking about. It sounds like that's what all the issues have been, you know, whether it be district or city manager or employee.
And it's only for the new council and new mayor.
Well, no, and Mr. Castle brings up a very good point when he mentions that the charter doesn't allow it, but we're saying if there's a charter amendment, is what the mayor is referring to.
And so, the point that I'm raising here is, I don't know whether, I know, Mayor, when you'd sent out some note to all the council after this workshop together, that there may be some charter discussions. I'm not here advocating one or the other, I can give you some insights of what we see and some pluses and minuses, but, you know, that's the attorney, those are public policy discussions. But the bottom line is, if you're gonna ultimately change your charter, and you've got a vacancy in your manager, you're probably not gonna wait till your charter change is done to go through that process. So, the way that's protected is that, at the end of the day, normally in those agreements, almost all the agreements I've been involved with, will say, if a charter amendment takes place, that dramatically, you know, the changes, the roles, responsibilities, functions, or whatever, that the manager has an ability to opt out and take a severance if something happens. So, in other words, if there's some unintended consequences, that I was hired under these set of parameters, and two years down the road, you changed the charter, and now I can't appoint any of my department heads, there's an out involved with that. So, there's ways to address that, your attorney.
Yeah, ideally, the charter would have to be changed November at the election, but I don't know whether in fact we can.
And then not hire a manager until after the charter.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you.
Until the election happens, and then, you know, the new, then the manager, yeah, after the election.
After the election.
My presumption is, charter changes are big policy documents, they require a lot of community feedback, discussion, you know.
But if this council were to hire a manager before the charter is changed, and the charter changes, then the contract can't validate the new charter, so the charter would change with the manager's agreement.
But any community goes through charter revision.
That can impact the manager.
It could happen, any, I think city managers are aware that this could happen anywhere.
Exactly.
And it should, and charter changes should only happen for the betterment, right? So, you're talking about a situation where the charter changes to more restrict or cause conflict, but if it changes and it doesn't really affect the manager, it's gonna be an issue.
It's just, and I, these aren't legal terms, it's just if the roles and responsibilities are materially changed, I have an out as your manager. If they haven't, they'll just go, you're absolutely right, charters do change, and they may not touch the manager's office at all, so, there's no, it's not automatic, but there's some protection there just in case that you didn't get neutered, and I took one set of responsibilities and I don't have it.
Well, for example, if the charter says to confirm a removal, it needs a supermajority, I don't see that as being grounds for an opting out, you know, versus.
They're gonna benefit them.
We're on the same page, I'm just saying, if it materially changes their roles and responsibility negatively, they have an out on the process. So, that's how you can deal with it, I'm just saying, don't let that be a reason not to start a search whenever you decide to do it, there's ways to contractually protect the organization and the candidates involved, so, we can, that's the point I wanted to do.
That's the timing wise, the charter revision commission can't be appointed until after.
Do we need a commission, last time, I think the.
Well, that's when, that's when you can appoint the commission, which then makes recommendations.
But I thought we had an option, that the council.
Yeah, you don't need a commission, right?
Every 10 years are required by law, I think, to have a commission, but I think every two years, you are allowed to make charter changes, and the council can make changes, and the community can also bring forward some changes, but I think you have to have so many public hearings in between before you take the final vote.
So, technically, council, this council could make the charter changes, I think.
No, we could make the propositions.
No, no, yeah, but the election.
We could call the election and.
Yeah, okay, so anyway, that's.
Mayor, can I motion for a five-minute recess?
I was gonna ask, you were right where I was asked, it's been a long time.
Yeah, 10 minutes, 10 minute recess, yes.
It's 2:57, so we'll be back at, say, 3:10.
3:15.
3:15.
I knew we were getting close to one, but.
3:15.
I'll follow the mayor's lead on this one, so we'll go ahead and pick up where we left off. These are obviously excerpts out of the charter provisions that we spoke about earlier. The responsibilities of the manager are articulated in section three of your charter. Clearly, the manager's services, the chief administrator, executive officer of the city, handles all the responsibilities and the day-to-day functions unless articulated separately from your charter. The provisions, I think, that are important to identify, the point or review issued in the best interest of the city, suspend, reassign, terminate of the city department directors or or under this charter, except as authorized, we talked earlier, there's some immediate regulations in the charter that require some certain things in the council and some of those removals. And then, the department has above beyond that, unless separately identified in your charter, had to cover, appoint, remove, suspend or employees in respect of departments or sort of the sections of the directors. Basically, handles day-to-day responsibilities, attends all your council meetings, and has continually been involved in discussions, but doesn't have to look. Provisions of the charter ultimately are the burden of the manager to make sure be done. The policy of the charter says that this is the way it's operated, that calls on the responsibilities of the charter, subject to enforcement. And then, other functions, responsibility, not surprisingly, preparing the annual budget, a comprehensive report, they used to call it CAPR, something else, I forgot what they used to be called CAPR, I'll get the new language that Gatsby has put together, but basically, your audit of the year, financial operations, and then, any other reports and issues, things that are going, and issues updating PDUO rise in the operations. PDUO rise to the financial conditions and responsibilities, and if there's adjustments, typically, financial adjustments, budget adjustments, things like that, revenue shortcuts that have to be addressed. And then, there may be other functions and responsibilities like all positions that subject that are not consistent with the charter, but you can ask the manager to get involved. So, pretty broad responsibilities, but basically, that person serves as the day-to-day operational lead, yes?
I was gonna actually use the mic so that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I saw, I forgot about that.
I said, I'm used to having a lavalier, my apologies.
I do bad notes as it is, so I can't make.
Not a problem, we got it. Okay, so, a couple other things that were, that I just wanted to highlight, looking at your charter provisions. This is a unique one that I see, it's articulated separately in your charter as a planning and zoning department, hiring a director. Once again, this one looks to be that the, this is one of those kinda blended responsibilities, you have a director, it can be appointed, removed by the city manager with the approval of the council, so once again, there's some checkoff responsibilities there, and the planning director, obviously, he's got a lot of responsibilities in terms of the look and the feel, and how your comp plan, we had this conversation earlier about your comp plan, certainly operates on that, but a unique scenario, appointed, removed by the manager, but once requiring, in this case, the approval of the council, not a specified majority or certain number, so, this, as I say, some unique provisions in your charters that have different sections. I just wanted to close on this one, and prohibitions, in terms of the role, and this is, once again, most of your candidates that will apply for this position, were going to be members of the International City County Management Association. By virtue of being a member of ICMA, and we normally require, in our contracts, that we work with councils in your employment agreements, that you employ or have the manager become a member of ICMA, the reason being that is you automatically bind them to the ICMA Code of Ethics. And I can get you a copy of that, or Keith can get you a copy of that, but one of the things they talk about is treating all council members, you get the same information, you get the process, that, you know, it's, it's commitment to public good services. Generally, there's also a provision in that, that a manager, to the extent that they're hired, and that they, and that they are completing the terms and functions of their responsibility and the council that they're employed by is honoring the terms and conditions of employment. Typically, ICMA frowns upon managers leaving within two years of appointment, assuming everybody has come together for the right reasons. They don't want to have managers simply job shop for the sake of going to the next opportunity. Now, there is some outs for that provision, that if it's not healthy for the manager, or the council, or the community, because strained relationships are something that takes place, but typically, managers under the ICMA Code of Ethics, assuming everybody does what they say they're gonna do, and they break bread together, they're gonna be in your position for typically a two-year period. If not, they can be brought up on ethics violations by your state association, reviewed, and they can be censored, or ultimately removed from the association. So there's some value to having that component. One of the other elements is ICMA members are typically pretty politically neutral, they're like the Swiss, and for obvious reasons. They have to work, you know, different places, have different, some are elected on partisan basis, some, most local governments aren't, but if they are viewed as Republican, or a Democrat, or an Independent, or whatever that may be, they typically have to work with whoever gets elected, both at the local level, and then typically, they're involved in working with your state and your federal representatives, and if they're kind of tied with a particular candidate, they get neutered in terms of their ability. So, basically, your charter has a similar provision, basically, the manager, the only thing that they can be involved with is public interest stuff, if you're doing a bond resolution or something of that nature, and there's an informational campaign that you, you've said, you know, is, is something that the whole city would be involved with. Other than that, they're, they're not gonna be attending political fundraisers, not gonna be putting signs in their yards, things of that nature, and that's very consistent with ICMA as well. You want that person to be apolitical for the right reasons in the process. So, with that as the background, as a charter provision, what I'm gonna tell you is, and working with boards across the country, everything doesn't work the way you want it to do, in all efforts as well. You're gonna have problems, you're gonna have issues, it is inevitable. As you said, mayor, you know, sometimes you roll back into the stormy component, that happens as well, and so, I thought I wanted to just give you some tools and what we see. One of the things that Keith asked us to do, and, is to look, and as I spoke with several of you, he said, you know, tell us about what success looks like in other places, that, what, you know, principles and governance practices. So, what I wanted to do in the next piece is really kind of talk through that, about roles and effective boards and responsibilities and what you can do. So, I'm a big Gary Larson far side, I don't know if anybody, I, I've, I've always been a fan of Gary Larson, I cried when he decided he wasn't gonna do this anymore, but I, you know. So, you're gonna see, typically, in a lot of my efforts, and this is the one with the dogs, I'm trying to figure out how they're gonna shoot the cat in the tree, and there's too many people trying to figure out directions, nobody's in charge, nobody understands it. So, the, to be successful, you've gotta learn to work, and share your responsibilities, and stay in your swim lanes to be able to accomplish the things you want to do. Unintended consequences aren't always positive. More often than not, they're quite negative, and they can impact what you're trying to, to do in terms of your vision, your mission, your organizational goals. So, most of the organizations that I work with across the country, their state leagues many times have, you know, coffee cups or T-shirts, and there's a, there's a, called the Athenian oath that we often see done, and I, I think it's important to do, it goes back, I mentioned earlier about the Greeks and Athens, and, and a lot of our, our philosophies on democracy came out of that. So, this one goes back, the Athenian oath, I'm not gonna read it, but it goes back over two thousand years, and it really still rings true today in most organizations that I work with. And when you go through this whole effort, at the end of it, that basically, you're trying to transmit the organization that you've been, you know, had the privilege and honor of representing, and leaving it in a better position than when you came. You want to be able to take it to the next level, for another word to kind of modernize the term and effort. And so, we often strive to say, remember why you were elected. And, and when I started this discussion, even though I wasn't able to talk to everyone, y'all had goals and aspirations, if you looked at the theme, it was to improve the quality of life and improve the services that you provide, or this city provides, on behalf of your residents. That's what the Athenian oath is getting to. And so, they got it right, two thousand years ago, but sometimes you gotta go back to remind ourselves of why, why you're trying to do the things that you're trying to do. If you want to go a little more contemporary, and I don't want to get Rs or Ds or anything else, this is a quote from Arnold Schwarzenegger, but I thought it was an appropriate element as well. But really, it, whatever you do will come back to you more, more than what you give in this process. And I always strive, when I deal with elected officials, to remember those reasons of why you ran for office and the things you wanted to help accomplish as going forward. Now, that gonna be said, and today, probably, and I can say this from being in the business a long time, you know, it used to be just those scoundrels in Washington DC, they were the problem. Then it was the problem at your state capital. Well, now, it's us. Everybody, you know, whether it's a lack of civics and understanding of the federal and the state and the local government, but everybody is pretty disenfranchised, and they got their own thoughts, and tribal politics have come together, and the biggest confluence of that happens at the local level. Because, guess what? It happens every Monday, every other Monday, when you have your council meetings, it happens in your boards and committee meetings, it happens in the letters to the editor in the process, it happens when you're going to the grocery store, at your HEB or whatever, you know, everybody's got their thoughts and opinions, you're either with us or against us, and the challenge you face as elected officials is, how do you deal with all this stuff? It comes at you, and, and you're not gonna be able to please everybody in the process. So, I always talk about the fact that, the biggest thing that you have to deal with as elected officials is the fact that there are very few absolutes right and left on this, on the world that we work in now. And so, just as that individual is coming and saying, they're on one side of the six, and it says six, if you're on the other side, it says nine, guess what? They're both right. It's their perspective they bring, and so you have to recognize that those perspectives matter, and that you may be on the side that says six, but you gotta understand, the other person has another viewpoint, and how you deal with that as an individual, how you deal with that as a body politic, is an important element in terms of the way in which you do business, and it gets back to organizational values in the process. In the simpler vein, you know, if you're the guy stranded on the island, you're looking for the boat, you're happy to see it, but if you've been stuck in the boat, you're happy to see the island. So, perspectives will matter, on what you, you know, what you want to do. I have another slide, I'm always concerned if I'm gonna run into PETA folks or not, but I have a slide, I love barbecue, I travel a lot, and I have a slide that has a trailer that's got a pig in the cage, and has a smoker next to it. Now, if you're a fan like any of barbecue, you're gonna love that, but if I'm the pig, I have an entirely different perspective of that relationship as well, so, thought I'd stay on the safe side there, so. So, what I want to talk about today, and spend some time with you as a group, is things, as we work with councils to talk about what is good governance, I want to go back, I don't know if anybody has read Patrick Lencani, he has a variety of business, a variety of business books, and he typically has a fictitional organization with a variety of people, and then he'll kind of walk through what that organization's going through, and all the different personalities, and if you read it, you get, it's a quick read, I fly a lot, I can knock out a book typically in a flight and a half. It's a quick read in the process, but they're really helpful. One of his, I, I think one of his strongest books is The Five Dysfunctions of a Team, and it talks about how a team comes together and works through challenges. And I think it's extremely pertinent as it relates to the business of local government, and the fact that you are governing as how you come together. So, good read on that, The Five Dysfunctions, and we're, we're gonna kind of walk through these in, in a high level, and relate it specifically back to being on city council. You know, those organizations, working from the bottom up, if a team doesn't have trust, it can't be successful. It's the foundation of everything you do as an organization, and how you come, either trusting or not trusting each other, and trust your administration is a problem. I mentioned earlier about how you deal with conflicts, just like those perspective matter sheets that I showed, or those pictures, you're gonna have differences of opinion, that's appropriate. I'm not asking you not to be an advocate for the position you got, but how you deal with the differences of opinions professionally, and not becoming personal, or becoming where it's destructive, matters. And groups that have destructive dealings with conflicts are ineffective, and the same folk, folks that don't deal with conflict at all, can't be successful, because it's always that eight-hundred-pound grill in the room that nobody wants to talk about as well. Other things that we try to see in groups that, the functions that, that affect the success of a team, is a failure to commit. Setting goals, setting objectives, making sure that you're committed to the cause that you're trying to accomplish. In a similar vein, groups that don't have accountability, tracking and measuring your processes will have a certain impact, and at the end is focusing on results. At the end of the day, did I accomplish what I wanted to do as an organization, team in the process? So, those are the dysfunctions of the team. If you read Lencani's work, it talks about team members that kind of work at those areas and challenges to that, so I'm gonna talk about those that don't, versus what those organizations look like that can be successful. So, taking this, and then capturing what we see across the country and working with other cities, those groups that we see that govern effectively, they take this broad view, they understand the simple solutions have probably been solved. The low-hanging fruit, for all practical purposes, has probably been done, I don't care how dysfunctional your organization is, it's probably been done. The stuff you're now dealing with takes hard work, is complex, is not a simple solution, and you have to recognize that it's a dynamic process. You gotta take a broad view and not get caught up in the weeds, especially at the council level. You want to go back, I've spoken earlier, and you're gonna hear me harp on this, the, the overall importance of mission, vision, and values. You've gotta build the culture, you've gotta, you as a council have the responsibility to set the direction of the organization, and then, everything you do ought to be related to that. Now, I see that, you, you've taken a step in the process, I notice in many organizations have strategic plans, you've already gone that, where you, you align the different actions you take under your, your agenda, under which, which I would call strategic pillars in your plan, that's a great start, because at least you're using that as a lens of why we're doing this, and how it relates to what we're trying to accomplish. I think you can enhance your plan, as I mentioned earlier, in a couple other areas, but basically, setting that strategic plan and your priority as your decision of founding, does this help me accomplish it? And if it doesn't, should we be doing it or not? Or should we tweak it to make it work in that effort? That, that concept of alignment. I stress a lot, nobody, rarely, I've encountered, rarely do I find council members that really, when they got, first got elected, have a full grasp of everything you do. Most of the time, I'll say this with a little number of elected official council members that are, that are thinking of running for the office. As I interview council members across the country for the searches or council retreats, I always say, well, how long you been? And, you know, sometimes the newest ones have said, I have no idea. I didn't know what we did, I didn't know what I didn't know, you know, type of thing. And so, I, you've all been there, I suspect to some extent, no matter what, you know, where your background would be. But basically, to do this well, we really encourage, you've got the Texas Municipal League, you've got the, the National League of Cities, there's a variety of conferences and events and training programs. Most of the successful boards we see get plugged in, they, they encourage their participation at their conferences, their events, their training programs, because, I will tell you, every city has some unique issues, but more often than not, in my experience, is government is more evolutionary than revolutionary. Somebody's figured something out that's worked somewhere else, it may not be exactly the same, and guess what we all do as managers? We grab that, we tweak it, make it work, and all of a sudden, we're talking to the circuit about how it worked in our, our community, it's the name of the game. So, the only way you do that as elected officials is you talk to other elected officials, and you're gonna understand that there are different ways, and the things you think that were totally unique to you, guess what? They may have a unique flavor or twist, but I guarantee, you're gonna find some of your friends and colleagues in other cities that have dealt with something similar, and they're gonna give you some insights. And so, that board education and training, that involvement is something we really encourage boards to be involved with. Nothing that I'm gonna say today or tomorrow is gonna say the council just gets the manager free will to do whatever he or she wants to do. Your role as a policymaker is to, you know, here's the boundaries, here's the responsibilities, and, and, and we're vesting in you an incredible amount of responsibility to manage this place, and that we expect you to do it within these areas, but we're gonna be on you to make sure that you're doing it appropriately from, you know, within those, those parameters that are established. So I'm not saying, even under the roles of micromanaging and all that, staff still is accountable to the overall policies, procedures, charters, and directions and budgets you've got, and that's certainly appropriate, and managers will understand that. Any manager that's in this business understands that's the nature of it. And this is the one that gets tough as well, that you're willing to lead despite opposition, but you evaluate the details. Mayor, you spoke earlier about different thoughts and opinions that come forward, you gotta sort that stuff out. And I'm not saying you don't have those debates by any stretch, but at the end of the day, you gotta make some decisions, and whether it's your tax rate, whether it's your solid waste rate, whether it's your utility rates, whatever that is, whether it's a zoning case, at the end of the day, you gotta take that all into consideration, and then ultimately make the best decision you've got. And I'm gonna say, at the end of the day, sometimes those decisions aren't popular. I venture to say that a good portion of the decisions you make are not universally liked. And so, you gotta be willing to say, I'm doing it for the right reasons, and I've evaluated those items as well. So, those are, those are just some characteristics we encourage you to look at as well. This gets to the point of how you deal with each other. As I say, you're in a unique position where you don't get to pick who sits next to you at the council in terms of their, their roles and responsibilities. So, you gotta learn to get with each other, and to, and the way you interact with each other is so critical. And it's not only for a healthy organization, I mentioned earlier, most cities want to have a successful economic development process, they want businesses to want to make investments and, and decisions that are gonna help improve quality and invest the overall employability and, and wages and things of that nature in your community. If you don't treat yourself well as a group, they're not coming to you. And guess what? You never knew you were even under consideration, because they've gone to two or three other cities down the road, for whatever the reason. Because they don't want to get caught up in your drama. They don't want to be in that decision, they want to have some sense of security, that we're gonna be dealt with fairly and equitably, and that you treat each other with respect, not putting each other down and calling each other names. Believe me, I've worked with places all over, that happens, and, and, but their also goal is, we want to be the most business-friendly community in the world, and I'm saying, you can't have it both ways. They're looking at you as policymakers, and how you treat each other, and how you deal with conflict is a big issue for them as well. And as a result, and this gets back to trusting each other, and, and we're talking about trust here shortly, you're not judging the, you're not coming to conclusions about why. I mean, in the back of your mind, a council member might make a different position than me, and immediately, well, why are they thinking that? And I realize, for human nature, but at some point, you gotta just drop that, and first allow them to explain his or her position, so you can appreciate that, that six or the nine example that I provided. Don't jump to the conclusion that it's just a different conclusion, there's something going on behind it as well. How you deal with each other, and how you deal with your staff, and how you deal with your stakeholders is also directly related to your success or failure in economic development, and success or failure as an organization. If your staff is scared to come before you as a board, because they're getting beat down and criticized and nothing's right, guess what? You know, they're not gonna feel really lovingly to want to come in the next day and be committed to your cause. So, respect the fact that you're dealing with them, even though they're not your direct report, how you treat staff and how you treat each other goes back to this perception of what your culture is overall. These next two points are really important, developing loyalty, you are under a council-manager form of government. Your charter, your constitution says, this is the way you're gonna operate. And, just like a marriage, I can tell you, I've been married for close to forty years, my wife always threats me, I'm not gonna make it to forty-one, but we'll, along the line, we make compromises, and there's things I knew, I do, that I know piss her off royally and vice versa, it's the nature of the game. That's gonna happen in your council-manager relationships as well, there's things that you just may not like, but just like people that have become accustomed to kind of working through a relationship, you know, I'm not, fortunately, we haven't decided to divorce each other on the, on the whim of a, of a given issue, we've been able to kind of work through those challenges and issues. So, think about it from that standpoint, if you're married, think of the compromises, think of the relationship, think of the challenges, think of the communication it takes to be successful in a marriage, that's a lot of what it takes in a manager. Now, it's more difficult, because it's not just the, you know, spouses, now I got, you know, seven other people, or volunteers as well, they're saying it, but the relationship is very important to maintain, and, and maintaining the understanding of the roles and responsibilities in court. And then, at the end of the day, just like in a marriage, you don't typically try to play gotcha, those marriages don't normally last. You know, you try to head those items, you talk through those issues, you talk through, you pick the scabs that are important to pick at, in order to be healthier and stronger as well. So, the reason this stuff's important is this language here. To reach decisions with broad consensus, an environment of teamwork and mutual respect creates, within the group, a broad-based sense of ownership in the process and ultimately in the decision. Now, nowhere in that will you see, I say, don't advocate for your position, but a couple of you have said, hey, I've been in the minority view a couple times, and I've had to work my way through it, and I've had, it's just kinda, it is what it is, it's the will of the council. That's an important element. Advocate for your position as heartily as you can, and as vigorously as you can, but at the end of the day, you gotta treat each other with respect, you gotta come to a conclusion and say, decision's been made. Many times, in that conversation, you'll find commonalities. I'm amazed, when I work with councils as a manager, where, from the public's perspective, it looks like I got eight different opinions, but I can see probably seven or eight of you very close, if I can just keep it in these parameters, and in many cases, that means you gotta have a little compromise to go forward. But you gotta have the willingness to kind of understand that, and if you can get everybody invested in the decision, maybe it's not a, maybe it's not an eight-oh split, or a nine-oh split, or, or nine-oh vote, but even if you end up being on the lower side, I voted against split or nine-o vote, but even if you end up being on the lower side, I voted against it for the reasons I felt. I just don't, I can't get there, but at the end, I respect the will of the council. We got there. That's an important element of being able to come together. So, the concept of governance we talk about is going back to the philosophy of what you wanna accomplish and why. And I told you I'm gonna harp a lot on mission, vision, values, and goals. That is your bible. That is where you ought to be, everything you do ought to relate back to your mission, vision, values, and your goals of the organization. How you do that is your policies and how you wanna accomplish those things, and the way in which you do that, especially as it relates to governance, is your council, many call them norms and procedures, some call it governance policies, things of that nature. I know you've got a document, I had a chance to look over it, that talks about kinda roles and responsibilities. That's another area that we work with councils in large and small places. Some of these, in very large cities, have a council do's and don'ts, and it's 10 items about how they're gonna govern. And you know what? They keep it on the dais, so every council member at every meeting sees that 10 item, and they can refer back to it. It's a sense of a norm that they have bound themselves to. I have certainly seen other places that are very elaborate in how they handle those things. So, that's not for me to say which one works or not. The point is, as a group, you've gotta come to some terms, and everybody has to agree, "This is how we're gonna govern," and whatever that process looks like. And that's another workshop, you wanna spend time on that, but just recognizing that that's the area in which you get buy-in, you hash it out, and then you agree, and you basically have a social pact with each other. That regardless of whatever the issue is, or whatever the personalities, or whatever the politics may be, this is the way we're gonna operate, and we're gonna hold each other accountable to doing it that way. So, this is one that I find, and I always smile because I see this in every community I work in, and every presentation, I get a chance to watch councils go forward, and as a manager, I just have to smile back, is that presentations, an issue, a citizen complaint comes up and says, "We got a problem with this, we gotta fix this." And immediately, the solutions are being thrown back from the [inaudible]. "We just gotta do this, we just gotta do that, we gotta do whatever the case would be." What I'll tell you is, I'm gonna go back to the point, most of the low-hanging truths are unsolved. If it's a problem, it's probably got more complexities, got more legs, more tentacles to address with. And so, I just always encourage boards, and what we see in boards that are very effective with their communities and highly effective organizations, is they kinda get all the facts and figures before they immediately jump to the solutions. We're human nature, we all do this as well, but it's just encourage you to think back, make sure you understand it, because I guarantee you, most of the time in public comments, you're getting viewpoint of one person. And I'm not discrediting that, but it's that viewpoint of one person. Every other person that may be affected have a different view on the, you gotta take that into account. So, don't just jump to conclusions before you fully understand the nature of all the issues and the entanglements that will take place. Your manager and your staff will help you identify that. There may be a policy, it may be a rule, it may be a state law, or something of that nature that might be a factor at play. So, just be sensitive to not jumping to those conclusions. So, this is the part that a lot of council members like to get involved with in discussions about thoughtful and healthy deliberations. As I said, I expect, and the nature of the process you operate in, is you're gonna have differences of thoughts, and that's appropriate. How you deal with it is the more important issue, not the fact you have different thoughts. So, you gotta at some point, you know, we all say this at some stage of the game, and I'll say this even as a city manager, at some point, you're just not gonna fall on every item. I'm not gonna fall on a sword on every, it's just not that big of an item. So, you gotta pick and choose where you're, where you're gonna stake your claim and where you're really gonna go to mat and saying, "I just philosophically believe this, and this is it." So, don't make everything that item that you're gonna fall on your sword. That's not gonna get you very well. And remember, you know, we're talking about not counting to five, but at the end of the day, you gotta get at least four other folks that are on the same page with you. And if you fall on your sword on every item, guess what? You're gonna have a tough time getting votes to support you because you're gonna burn a lot of bridges as council members in that fashion. In a similar vein, don't sweat over the details, the small stuff. Staff's got that, stay at that high level. If you wanna say, "Hey, I'm concerned," just be tuned into that, let it go with that. Don't try to solve that stuff, because it will, it will take you into weeds, and governance doesn't have to be this painful. It really doesn't. Sometimes, you'll see later, I'll talk, we can sometimes be your own worst enemies. You know, the small stuff, if it's concern, pass it on to your manager, pass it on to your staff, don't get into that nitty-gritty in the process. The point that you raised, Mayor, as well, how do you get unified? Fight hard for your issue, but at the end of the day, once you've made your case, you either carry it or not, maybe you help sway a few changes and modifications where you've got more than three or four people that you thought you had on an issue, and now you've got a majority and it goes great. At the end of it, you may be on the winning side, you may be on the losing side. I guarantee you, you have two terms here potentially, eight years. You've got countless amount of votes, countless of mountains to climb, you know, find it and then make your decision and unify in your decisions. Sometimes, and this is a perspective from being involved in government long enough to know, I talk about never attribute to analysis adequately ascribed to senselessness. There are times where councils, and I guarantee that at some point, you would be an exception, not the norm, where, you know, a discussion occurs, and somebody raises an issue, and all of a sudden it changed the dynamic, and then you end up taking a vote, and then you go back in the room, and at the end you go, "You know, I can't believe we just voted that way." And somebody says, "Yeah, I can't believe we just..." And at the end of the day, you've just been drawn down that effort, and you've kind of, you've gone into it, you chased a rabbit down the path, and you just kinda, you give up in the effort. So, recognize that sometimes you're gonna be asked to do some pretty crazy things. Just don't fall into that trap. Just evaluate it, talk through it, figure it out, give yourself a time to react to it, because sometimes you're gonna be asked stuff that just makes no sense at all, and the heat of the day will sometimes bring you down in that arena. The other is how you disagree and be disagreeable. I encourage that. I work some councils, I say, "Your next candidates, regardless of what happens in the election, will be looking, you're all online, you all got council meetings that are available. Most of the groups will look at that, your candidates are gonna look at that and say, 'Holy crap, do I wanna be part of that?'" You know, there are council name-calling's and all that, and they're gonna say, "I'm just not gonna apply." And those are really, some of those candidates are gonna be really good. So, recognize the face of what you are will impact the quality of the folks that are gonna consider applying for this position. So, disagree without, you know, becoming personal on issue. The next two pieces are items that, once again, I can say this from somebody...
[inaudible]
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Keith.
They're gonna see this council making 15 motions of direction to their city manager per meeting. Don't think that won't get seen.
I'm gonna talk about that tomorrow, because I, a number of you talked about that, so that was a point that I'm gonna raise in the process. This is gonna go back to maintain your strategic vision. Strategic vision, your strategic plan. You have a plan, but, you know, it's the shiny thing that's happening today, tomorrow, whatever. You ought to evaluate those, does it fit into the plan? Once again, have the plan, that ought to be overarching decision. So, let me talk about cave people and AIs. So, does everybody know what a cave person is? And I don't mean the cavemen that live Neanderthals. Yes, citizens against virtually everything. Now, I'm gonna go on a stretch that you probably don't have those here, right? No, I'm sure you do. No matter what the issue is, they're gonna be opposed to it, and there're gonna be 101 reasons to address it, and you gotta respect their opinion. They're entitled to that thought, they're a constituent, that's the way this process works, and you gotta deal effectively with them. You can hear their comments, take it into account, take it into consideration. I encourage you not to over-empower them, because they will dictate your agenda, and whatever your vision, mission values are, they're gonna be against whatever it is. These are folks that are not gonna agree if the sky is blue. "No, it's chartreuse," or "It's gray," or it's [inaudible]. It's gonna be that hour. So, respect their thoughts, they're part of the conversation, but don't cater. The other is a group that has become increasingly more dangerous, and we refer to them as AIs. It's not artificial intelligence, it's articulate incompetence. So, let me talk a little bit about those folks. So, you know, we talked a little about the cave folks. They're gonna, they're gonna talk about the problems. Most of the people I have dealt with as a city manager, and most of the people I have seen in my councils that I work with as a consultant, is, they're gonna have everything that's wrong, but they're not gonna have a single recommendation for a solution. It's about the complaint, it's not about the solution. So, that's a warning sign. They're gonna get you to that decision that I talked about to try to get you to do things. At the end of the day, you're going, "Why the heck did we just do this? I can't believe we just voted on those items." And as I said, I see it happen, it does happen elsewhere. And then, basically, it really, you gotta be careful, because they're outcomes that they will drive to you, at the end of the day, if you do all the mental calculations, it just don't make sense. And so, be careful not to get caught up. And I'm not saying you don't listen to them, you don't give them their opportunity for their comments, just don't let it dictate your driving process. So, AIs are a different beast, and we're seeing more and more of these now with the age of the internet, and I say that now, it's been around for a long time, but the fact-checking that takes place. These are folks that no matter what you have done, you may have engaged a consultant that just did a $100,000, $200,000 study, they're experts in the area, and they've come up with a solution. And AI is gonna come to you and saying, "Well, I got this other report," or "I got this opinion, and this is why this doesn't make any sense." Once again, they're entitled to their thoughts and opinions, but you understand, they're gonna come from their own viewpoints, and they're gonna articulate it, and they're gonna give you sites and sources and information. You're welcome to go down that to the degree that you want, but once again, you're hiring people in many cases to give you thoughts and recommendations, make sure they've taken into account the things that have been raised, but don't blindly go down that path in the process. But more often not, what we find is AIs, as we affectionately call them in the business, is that, you know, they basically don't wanna have something be changed. They're gonna be an antagonistic to whatever you're trying to accomplish. So, it's the nature of the game, it is the world we live in, you're gonna be facing it. Don't let the caves and the AIs dictate your agenda. That's the point I wanna leave you with in the process. So, that's the impact that takes place. It happens. You've gotta take into account public comment, but at the end of the day, I said at the very beginning of this meeting, you by virtue in the position you have are exposed to tenfold the amount of information that an average citizen has. Remember, I said you're hired to represent them, and if you don't take the knowledge and the background that you've been invested with in terms of those information, you're probably not gonna make the best decisions that you could possibly make based on facts and data and analysis outcome. Now, at the end of the day, those caves and the AI that I mentioned, it's your responsibility after you've made the decision to articulate why you did it. And if you disagreed with them, here's why. That's the other role. You don't get to vote, that's the other piece of the pie that you gotta deal with. You've gotta communicate the whys of your decision. And even if you didn't agree with it, and say, "Listen, I advocated for that, but at the end of the day, I wasn't able to carry it, I appreciate it, this is the way we're gonna go forward." That's the other role that you play as well. So, I talked about board conflicts, and inevitably, it will happen anytime you get two people together in a marriage, let alone nine of you. As a council, you're gonna have conflict. So, we try to describe conflict as having the appropriate amount of tension. And so, the best analogy we have on good conflict is a guitar string. It is tight enough that it makes a good sound when it's appropriately tuned. What happens if you over-tighten it? It breaks. And if it's under-tightened, it sounds terrible. So, think of conflict in that analogy of a guitar string and what it's supposed to sound like versus what over or under utilizing conflict and tension will be. So, Patrick Lynn Conney talks about conflicts, is that you can have groups that can be at war with each other and be basically battling over everything, and that's destructive, because remember I said about building trust as a foundation? If you're constantly upset at the person around you, you're probably not gonna trust them very well. So, that's an unhealthy part of conflict. On the other side, we've also seen organizations, and this gets to when, on the, the tuckman, I'm sorry, I was supposed to not be in front of this camera. On tuckman, I talked about the forming section where it's almost artificially compatible. Nobody wants to deal with the issue, and so, it just kinda lingers in the background. And so, that's that too-loose of a string, that the guitar string doesn't sound right, the guitar playing doesn't sound right. So, you gotta find that healthy tension between the two of those. So, the groups that I've seen is that when you're dealing with conflict and they have, you know, they don't wanna deal with it, their meetings are pretty boring. I mean, you don't get to do anything, there's not a lot of excitement, there's not a lot of enthusiasm in the process. To your point, Mayor, you mentioned earlier about back-channeling with staff and things of that nature. If they don't, if they're not gonna deal with it as a group, guess what? I'm gonna find the path, it's like water, I'm gonna find the police resistant, I'm gonna find where that fissure can be, where I can step into that arena and try to make that, "Hey, do you know why this council member's doing this, we ought to be doing something else, don't trust them?" If you don't deal with conflict, you tend not to deal with the controversial topics that are probably pretty important. As I say, that 800-pound grill in the room that only wants to talk about is affecting your organization and affecting the things that you do as an organization. Also, if you're not dealing with conflict, the value of nine individuals is that you all bring your own unique skills and insights to the table. Everybody's got their own background, their own perspectives, their own passions, and the value of that is to tap the wisdom of that, to get that direction. And so, if you don't trust each other, and you don't deal with conflict, you're not willing to draw that out from the other conflict. And I will tell you, lots of times I have met with my staff where I've had an opinion going on day one, but only by listening to people have a different thought or opinion, I'm going, "You're right." You know, maybe I don't have this all figured out, we gotta figure out a different way to make it handle. But I wouldn't know that unless I encouraged that type of dialogue. And there's a lot of just wasted time. You spend time, and public meetings are the nature of the beast, you know, they're just, they're meant to be, they're elongated for all the right reasons to allow conversation, but they can be even worse so by just posturing and self-preservations and comments that are made. So, recognizing, you know, if you don't deal with conflict, it will certainly probably lengthen your discussions and deliberations. Now, on the flip side, for those groups that we find that have good conflict management, it's about honest, passionate debate around issues, as I said, I'm not encouraging not to be passionate about the issues you've got. It's gonna feel uncomfortable at times, and a number of you said that when I've talked to you. There's times where I feel like I'm at odds with my colleagues. Well, how you deal with each other, as long as it doesn't get personal and destructive, that's okay. There's gonna be a level of uncomfortableness there. The importance of what I mentioned earlier, whether it's your boards and procedures, your norms, your policies, your governance policy, how you deal with conflict as a group that you agree to and kinda subscribe to as a group, and holding each other accountable to that will go a long way. That's another workshop down the road to think about down. But basically, you gotta have a sense of norms, and you gotta say, "Listen, we've agreed, we're not gonna get personal. And if we get personal, someone else has to call it out. Hey, this is what we agreed to, folks, let's take it down a few notches and get back to the discussion." And that you should feel welcome to encourage those conversations and those different thoughts and opinions. And so, I recognize, because a number of you talked about some conflicts, intentions that occur, not necessarily every time, but sometimes there's thoughts and lingering issues after votes. Is there a broad sense of consensus of how you deal with conflict as a council? And if so, you know, what does that look like to you? So, I'll open that up for some feedback.
We've had conflict on the council before, but we tend not to get personal, in my opinion. I mean, it is what it is sometimes, you know, there's, there's certain views on things, but we've never stooped to the level of calling each other names or bringing up anything like that. So, I don't, I mean, yes, we have conflict, but honestly, I don't think we've ever crossed that line in the time that I've been here, where we resort to low blows or name-calling or anything like that.
Before I came on board, the mayor, previous council, he had it rough. I don't think there was much of...
It was tamer when you all went...
Yeah. When I came on board, that kinda stopped the, there was one council member that always named-called, but I guess named-called, you know, was his nature. But prior to that, I mean, they just didn't respect the office, council members were at each other's throats. This council here's been very respectful of each other. We give ourselves time to talk and to express our views. We might not agree all the time, but for the most part, as a unit, when it comes to the big items, and you heard this earlier before, we all tend to gel and come together. It's been a good, it's been a good council.
I actually wanna add that some of the, for me, some of the conflict that we've gone through has, I think, actually taken us more down that hierarchy to the progressive phase that we were talking about. I think we've, after we hit some conflicts and we all kinda saw that, you know, the stances, it, since we're not able to communicate with each other so much, like we, you know, we do respect the walking quorum issue and stuff, it kinda gives us all a sense of like what our passions are for the city, and we kind of respect that, and then we tailor our decisions to where it's like, okay, we're gonna make sure that since that, I think it just gives us a better understanding and helps us, you know, make decisions that are gonna, you know, kind of fit more in line with the goals of each of our colleagues. So, the conflict for me has actually helped me get, feel more at home or more comfortable on council, because at least I kind of know like where I stand, and I don't feel like I'm walking on eggshells with everybody, and then they know where I stand too.
Alyssa, I think you were trying to suggest...
Oh, I was just gonna mention that it, that I agree, but I also think that this council's not foreign to holding grudges if you disagree or vote against something. And maybe that hasn't happened so much recently, but it's not foreign to the council.
Well, that, as I say, there are... You do have some norms and procedures, I forget the policy that you refer to it now, but that may be something that you might want to talk through as a group, and certainly I'll encourage, depending on what the composition of the future will be. Anytime there's a change in the council, for whatever reason, elections, resignations, whatever the case would be, you should revisit that, because there ought to be an acceptable kinda boundaries that you set, and everybody has to have skin in that game and that conversation, everybody has to agree that you're gonna hold each other accountable to each other in that regard. And so, recognizing that if that's been the case, maybe you gotta go back and revisit that process and have that conversation about how you deal with that as well. And once again, my focus to tell you, I was asked to say, "What works in places that work?" We see things that have that, even to the point where it's on the dais of every council member, every meeting, so that they've got it in front of them. So, in the heat of the passion of a battle, they can look down and say, "Oh, point number five, I'm supposed to do this, not do something else," and it just is a way of holding each other accountable going forward. So, it sounds like you're making some progress in that effort, that's great news, that's encouraging as well. So, the other thing to talk about in effective governance is setting and committing to expectations. And I will tell you as a city manager, I'm sure Keith will appreciate this as well, there's times where I've sat and, and I've had, I've typically worked with seven members on my boards, and you know, they've all over the place, and they go, well, Doug, you understand what we're saying now. And I have to say, council, with all due respect, I haven't a clue what you want to do, because I got, you know, seven different thoughts with 12 different insights on it, and I have no idea what you want me to do at the end of the day. So recognizing that, yeah, and, and I have to admit, your clerks are, are great in this. They're trying to figure out what the resolution is, and they're trying to, does include this? Does include that? Recognize it, it happens, but at the end, you've got to make sure everybody's on the same page. And so there's times where the manager's got to throw the flag out and say, I don't have a clue, or your clerk's got to be able to do this, because if you're not clear on your intention, I can guarantee you the outcome's going to be a bit fuzzy as well. And you're going to all walk away, I thought we told you to do this, but it was clear in that regard. So be very careful about that and be careful about unintended consequences that come out of it. So the quote I have to use is, I don't know if anybody recognized, you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. Do we have idea where that came from?
Alice in Wonderland?
You got it. There you go. You get the prize. The Cheshire Cat and Alice in the Wonderland. And so if you're not clear, any road will take you there, but you're probably not going to be happy with the results. So be careful about that effort as well. Additional thoughts on expectations is the commitment. So you just see a couple of things there as well. And this may get at the point that Keith was raising as well. At some point, you go through your annual goal-setting process, your strategic planning effort, and you say, here's what we want to accomplish, and here's our priorities, and we're going to go. I'm not here to say that things will not occur, that we might have to make some changes. That's appropriate. You've got to talk about that, not just make an assumption there's changes. Getting back to the previous point, be clear about your communication of why you're doing something different than what we said before. But you know, this, this commitment, the second part, meaning staying loyal to what you said you were going to do long after the mood you said has left you. It really drives home the point, recognizing if it was important then, it ought to still be important now unless there's a compelling reason to change the direction. So having that direction, having that common sense of vision and outcome is going to be really, really important. And here's what happens if you don't do it. You know, you, you as groups, you know, there was even some conversation last night about this workshop, about what was the outcome? I thought we were going to do this, we're going to do that, you know, that. Clear expectations and, and identification will remove that ambiguity. Make sure you've got understanding of what you want to do. If you don't have clear expectation, you're also going to lose windows of opportunities, because you, the, the staff doesn't know, should I pivot left, right, forward, back, whatever, how do I go? And so they're kind of immobilized, and timing does matter. One of your, one of your council members said before, you have to make decisions, sometimes important matters, and they're quick, but I need to know what that direction feels like. If you don't have a level of commitment, guess what? You're always, you know, you're not really ready to make that decision. You're just kind of wandering in the, in the desert in the process. And typically, what I find in effectiveness on boards is that if there's not been a resolution to the issue and you don't commit to the solution, you just rehash the same stuff over and over and over and over again, and it just never goes away. And it, obviously, there's second guessing that takes place with that as well. So this is the best way I can describe that as well. You're going to be faced with a lot of different things, and at some point, you've got to make a decision. And we've all seen the, the flattened squirrels, because they go left, right, left, right, and guess what? They get blown over. You're not, you, you've got to make the best decisions you can, you've got to be clear, you've got to articulate, but you've got to move on. And sometimes you have to go back and revisit it. If something, the world changed, and you've got to come back, no harm, no foul? This happened? We didn't know that at the time? We go back and revisit the process, but, but don't get hung up in that paralysis of not being able to commit to your decisions. So other values here, you clarify clarity of direction priorities, you have the entire, the alignment that I spoke of earlier, the entire organization, everybody generally is pulling the oars in the same direction. If you think about the Viking ships and how they went forward, if, if the left side is doing it one way and the right side, they're just spinning around. Basically, everybody's got to be pulling in the same area, common objectives, common outcomes. You will make some decisions that aren't going to be right. Recognize that, move on. Pick up, make the adjustments, make the counter-adjustments to move forward. If you have clarity in what you're trying to do, your staff and you as an organization, you as a community, will probably be able to commit to some things that other organizations can't. Best example I could say of that, many times, we had, in my former city, we had an airport, and we were always looking at making what we, or our vision for our airport was going to be. And so we always had things in the bank, so to speak, that we were ready to proceed but for financing that might not come about. But we had our clarity in the direction. And so I can't tell you the millions of dollars we got as grants, because at the end of the year, and I suspect Texas does it a lot like Florida, a lot of projects don't get done, you know, something happens, they don't have the local financing, they were already committed, and then they go around and say, does anybody have a need for a couple million dollars for this project? Lakeland was always at the door. We got this effort, so we were able to capitalize on those issues because somebody else couldn't be materially directive and, and go forward. So this is how those things in real life, if you have vision and common direction, you 'll be able to move forward, you'll be able to make those things happen and take advantage of circumstances. And then, as I say, at the end of it, you're going to have, you have to make decisions every day, and as much as you want, I've seen many boards that have what I call paralysis by analysis. You just have one more study, one more effort, and you can't make the decision. You have to make decisions with the best information you've got at a given point, and if by chance something changes, just adjust your plan accordingly. It's okay. It happens. The opportunities that you miss by not making those decisions generally are going to outweigh the opportunities that you, the, the risks that you've taken by moving in that direction. So this concept of commitment is two components. One is the buy-in, that you all collectively agree that this is what we're going to do, and then, second of all, the clarity in which you provide direction to your staff to do it. It needs both of those. Emphasize that. It needs both pieces. I'm not going to take the break now. I'm going to talk through some other questions on trust. I mentioned earlier, Lanconey talks about the foundation of all successful organizations start with trust. If you don't have that, nothing else happens along the line. So where we see organizations struggle, they basically hold things to themselves, they're not willing to share information, share weaknesses or thoughts, they don't provide feedback and insights into each other's thoughts and opinions, they, they stay in their own boxes, and this goes for your staff as well, they're not going to step over to the next level to help out at the department where there might be some common areas of, of outcomes that could be accomplished. They jump to conclusions about intentions and, and why people believe a certain way without having a chance to have that conversation. You've got to be willing to engage in that dialogue and that conversation. You don't tap into each other's expertise and passions and insights and perspectives. Remember I said before, as elected officials, you have a unique relationship with your community because you're elected. No other staff member has that. So you're going to have a perspective that may be similar, but may also be entirely different because of the relationships and the unique role that you play. The concept of holding grudges, I mentioned, Alyssa just mentioned that about maybe in the back, and most of the time, groups that, you know, don't trust each other, don't want to be with each other. Now, I know, think about how many, you think about how many hours you're together as a council? You were there, what, 5:30 to 11:00 last night? You're here, you know, four-plus hours today, you know, all the meetings over the time. You know, you ought to hopefully develop a relationship and have some trust with each other, because you're going to spend a lot of time with each other as well. So you, it, as I say, it doesn't have to be painful. You just have to reach out and, and develop those relationships. On the flip side, what we see in effective groups, sometimes you admit, hey, I may not have all the right answer, this is my gut feeling, I'm okay with that. Share that, you know? That's the value of having seven or eight other thoughts and opinions. Ask, be willing to ask for help, accept questions and input about areas of responsibility. You know, Peter, I think, Mayor, I think you're an attorney, and so there may be a thought about that, not that you're replacing a city attorney, but your training is going to take you in a different direction than Ruben, who is in law enforcement. So you know, those perspectives are going to be different. This third, this next fight about giving each other the benefit of the doubt is really important. Hear what they have to say without jumping to conclusion about why first. First, understand, and then you can seek to understand why they're coming in that direction. This whole concept of reaching out, talking to each other, focusing on energies and the important issues, not the day-to-day, the politics and what you're, you're kind of caught up with. If you're wrong, or you stepped over the line, admit it, ask for forgiveness and move on. Don't let it sit and linger to go forward. And hopefully, that gets you collectively to a process where you end up enjoying working with each other, even if you don't always agree with each other in the effort. So this is this concept of earning trust as well. So the classic scenario, two cars get into an accident, one guy gets out and says, hey, pretty shaken up, how about a drink? Next one says, yeah, but I'll take the drink. How come you're not having any? Guess what he says? I'm waiting until the police get here. Earned trust matters along the line. You've got to be willing to trust each other and not undercut each other along the line. So think about the two guys caught in the road and have a swig of a drink the next time you're thinking about, you know, giving some grace to your, your colleagues as well. So talk about trust, as I say, it's the foundation of your team, it's got vulnerability to it. In order to be trustful, you've got to be willing to give up a little of yourself as well. So that's a little bit scary, especially in politics and the public environment you operate in. I mentioned earlier about trust and relationships, it's a lot like a long-term marriage. It gets, it has to be maintained, you can't just do things consistently and have a successful relationship, but you can do things to accelerate it. And I say this because you've got new members coming on board as well, and so, you know, I don't know what that looks like, you don't know what that looks like, you don't know what the people and the personalities will be, but your composition's going to change for whatever look. You've got a couple that are turned out, so I know you're going to at least have a couple, a couple new slots. But there are things you can do to accelerate trust. So I, I'll defer to you if you want to get through this, but you know, this is the discussion, we all know the Charlie Brown and Lucy and the ball. You know, what happens every time Charlie Brown goes to kick the ball, the ball gets taken out from the, not a whole lot of trust there along the line. So one of the things we often do with our boards is, just a quick exercise, I'd be shocked if it didn't work here as well, basically think through these questions. How long you've been worked for or been affiliated with the city of Laredo? Where did you grow up? Where you were in the sibling, if you were first, second, youngest, middle, whatever that looked like? And at the end of the day, you know, what was the most difficult, important, or unique challenge of your childhood as you were growing up? So I want you to think about that for a second, and then I'm going to ask you to share those things with us as a group. And if I'm right, I would be surprised that you didn't learn something about each other that you didn't know about before. So who wants to go first?
Can I make a suggestion real quick? Just because most of us aren't here, I don't know if we, we could do this one tomorrow?
I, I can, I can do that if you want to jump that piece in together.
Maybe so, just because there'll be more of us tomorrow.
As your consultant, I always worry when I come back to day two, it's like, is everybody going to be here or not? I'm more than glad to do that. I know the day's in, but, but to your point, obviously, there's some other folks that aren't here, and this would be an important element to be involved in.
Well, and just because we spent a lot of time talking about other stuff, so...
Okay.
Just a suggestion to...
I'll defer to you. You want to hold off on that? We can, we can do that tomorrow morning?
Yeah, it's already 4:10, so...
Okay, gotcha. All right, gotcha. Okay, we'll do that. All right. So the other component of governance is understanding of nature. And so the analogy, never try to walk across the river just because it's the average depth of four feet. What does average mean? It's four feet in average. You're going to have some that are eight feet, some that are two feet, and you make these assumptions about understanding the dynamics that are taking place. This is something I've watched as a, as a manager and now as a consultant going forward, is this concept of fact-checking in processes. I guarantee, as whatever material, whatever information you've got presented to you, as that is occurring, you've got people in the audience, or people at home, or people on the dais, doing fact-checking right and left, and looking at internet, trying to get that together, you know? And we all say, you know, what does that look like? And what, and you can probably find any article, any position, any citation to present your point of view, and, and you know, say, hey, I got it off the internet, so it's got to be correct, right? Along the line. The other element is your, the concept of, we all, the nature of, of governance and working with the media, established media, certainly become more challenging over time, but now it has become even more complex, because you've got local bloggers, and you've got people that maybe not subscribe to whatever quote-unquote journalistic ethics name may be. Fact-checking information sources and things of that nature, but they all become part of that dynamic. You've got to recognize that's the environment we operate in now. And so just recognize that that's the environment in which you're having to make very difficult decisions in every week in the effort. And so this concept of bloggers and political operatives and, and you know, less trusting of sources and information is the world you have to navigate with. So as I say, you have to take that information into consideration, but at the end of the day, you can't let it dictate. You've got to, you're going to be subjected to a lot of information, you've got to make the decision based on all the facts and figures you've got before you. Accountability, this is the point that, and I think, Mayor, you said before that the manager can stop some of this. To a point, the manager can help as council members kind of get, go awry in different directions. They can help you try to find common ground. A good council-manager relationship is they'll help you find common ground to the extent that they can. But there are times where I've had, even as a manager, I've had council members come to me and say, my gosh, we've got to do something about this council member. You know, he's killing us, he's doing this, he's drawing us down all these areas, what are you going to... And then, you know, someone else will say that, and I'll say, I'm your manager, I work for all of you. I can't do that. I can try to help a council member, help them realize that the way they're operating may not endear themselves to getting other votes to let you accomplish that. But at the end of the day, you have to hold each other accountable. It's back to norms and policies and procedures and efforts. You've got to say, this is the way we're going to go. Successful organizations do that, and adhere to that. So if a council member would, as an example, I have a council member that, 11th hour, $600 million budget, we've had three months of workshops, councils, discussions, presentations, at the 11th hour, he would always say, well, I want to go through the capital improvement budget line by line, at the public hearing and the second public hearing. I just look over and say, council members, you know, you've spent countless hours on this budget. We could have addressed any of these issues three months ago, and do you want to do that now? And, but I can't stop that as a manager, only you as a board can do that. Say, how are we going to govern? How are we going to do it? So recognize there are parameters in which your manager can help you, but there are points that the manager can't do that because he, he or she works for you as a board. You have to do that together. And you've got to say, council member, I'm not going to give that a second, and I don't encourage any other members to give that a second, to do that, because you had plenty of opportunity to go forward. But I've had a number of council members that will give a second for a conversation and then come in and complain to me afterwards, you know, we just spent three hours on an item we shouldn't have done. And I said, who seconded the motion? Are you going to reward the behavior or not? So you know, you recognize the role you play in, in holding each other accountable to that. If you don't do this well, you're going to have resentments, you're going to have conflicts, not everybody's following the same script, you're probably not going to be that high-performing organization, you'll be at a mediocrity level and doing the same things over. Many times, accountability, I, you know, I, God love you all, I don't know how much material you get, but I know you get a lot of material, and you've got to figure out what's important, and that's the challenge of a manager, trying to say, how much, because each one of you will have a different level of patience or tolerance for details. If it's an item you're really passionate about, you may want everything in the nth degree, but another council member just wants the executive briefing, and you've got to figure out where that is. And so normally, you try to find what, how do we communicate with you as a board? What do you need versus a different council member, and then how do you provide it? But in many cases, what we find is, if you want the details, we'll give you the details, but we're always going to give you an executive summary at the high level. So you can pick and choose where you want to go at that point, but recognize that, how do you, how do you give enough material so you're comfortable to prepare for meetings going forward? And then ultimately, by sharing responsibility, I know the mayor, we talked about responsibilities of the mayor, the mayor's responsibilities to run the meeting and chair the meeting, but accountability is by all of you. It's not just the mayor. It shouldn't have to fall just to the mayor if you've got one or more members that are not kind of willing to be part of a, a common ground of, of governance. If you do it right, you're going to identify problems quickly, you're not going to be questioning each other, you're going to have respect in the process, and you're not going to get into, you know, micromanaging type issues as well, because you've already identified what you want to do, how you want to get there, and let your staff run that process. And this is driving that point home. It's really, your manager can help you, but they cannot solve your governance issues without you holding each other accountable to what you agreed to do. So I'm a big rock and roll fan, process, Jerry Garcia. Somebody had to do it, it's just incredibly pathetic, it had to be us. In this case, it's you as a council. It's ultimately your responsibility to do this. This is something that just comes with the territory. And if you want to be a successful organization, encouraged to do it. And a final word on that one, I think that sums it up. If you don't get it right, you don't understand it, you're going to miss the boat, you know? And those boats are a lot of opportunities. Okay, a couple other areas before we get into one other exercise that we might do tomorrow, because you don't have all your folks here today as well in the process. But focusing on results. If you don't do it, you're, you don't develop, you don't really move the bar, you don't know if you're making progress, you don't get a chance to celebrate the successes, because you never know if you really accomplished anything. You're just kind of wandering around, you know, in the desert, moving around. And boards that don't have some outcomes and direction and focus are always going to get distracted in what we call the shiny things in this business. Guarantee you, there's always something new that you want to do, and it may be the best thing you ought to do. The question is, is now the time to do it? Because does it fit into your plans, fit into your missions, fit into your strategic goals? If that's great, some, I've seen a lot of boards that are pretty creative, trying to figure out how to make it fit into that, and that's okay as well. to make it fit into that, and that's okay as well. If you can make that connection, that's good to do as well. But if not, what happens is, is your staff is constantly pulled in different directions. And to some extent, you know, I know Keith mentioned earlier about the resolutions that come forward. You know, if you get a plan, stick to a plan, make it sure, follow, monitor, and then don't deviate from it unless there's a good, solid reason to do it. But don't move in different directions. Otherwise, you're not going to accomplish the big things you want to try to do. Now, you must be doing some things right, because I think one of you said, hey, we've done a lot of things done. Got a lot of things worked out here, and so that's great. I mean, that means you've got the bones of that. The question is, if I'm here, can I get the organization to be here? Can I get the organization to be much step higher? In order to do that, you have to have some constraint about what you want to do, how many different ways you want to pull the organization in different directions. If you do it right, you're going to get, and I'm going to talk about this tomorrow, quality employees. I'll give you a preview in the process. The, you've got baby boomers that are retiring, asset-exited numbers, the next generation coming below them, there's smaller numbers out there to fill the slots. You've probably heard the numbers for every one job, for every one job seeker, there's two job opportunities. So there's 50% more opportunities. And so, people, as you're trying to build your organization, it's not just about the manager, it's your department heads, it's directors, it's all the way down to the lowest level of your organization. Those folks are going to want to go to a place that has a bigger vision and a bigger direction. My experience in working in a broad-based approach on demographics is you Gen X's and Gen Y's, once again, I hate to stereotype, but if you look at their raw numbers, they want to be compensated well, but they also want to be part of something bigger than that. And if your organization has a vision, has a direction, has, and can, and track, and they can see how they're part of accomplishing that, you've got to leg up on your competition. And those are the cities that you're going to lose that talent to. If you don't do it, there are cities that are doing that and get it, and they attack the best and the brightest talent away, and that's because they're out there. So that's a, that's a value to you as an organization in terms of recruitment. Willing to see the bigger issue that I'm going to subjugate at the end of the day, I may not get my area, I may not get my goal and effort, but I'm going to be willing to commit to something that's bigger because we've agreed on the biggest, high-level, overarching direction of this city. And then avoiding distractions, the shiny things that are affecting them as well. Focusing on those priorities, making sure that you don't get distracted by the things that may seem important now but don't really fit into the big picture. Expectations, we talked about focusing on results. Careful communicating unspoken expectations. Another discussion there coming forward. We always have jury trials going on. One guy got bribed. It was a cruise of bribery. Asked somebody to help out, to see if he could help out getting a different outcome with the jury. He got a way to be involved with it. So it was successful. Came back with a verdict of manslaughter. Afterwards, the prisoner went to his friend and said, hey, at our time convincing them to vote for a charge of manslaughter. Says, Hardey's right. Levin wanted to acquit you. If you're not clear on what you want to do, you may not get the outcome you want at the end of the day. So be clear in expectation, going back to the seven or eight different thoughts. What do you want to do? Make sure you're clear on that outcome, or you may not like the outcome that happens. So efforts, good boards, result, they accomplish the results because they've achieved it, they're monitoring it, they're moving forward, they're prioritizing it over the individual wants. You come to some conclusion of what you want to accomplish. You're clarifying the results, keeping them visible so that you and your constituents and your municipal organization know, am I making progress? Am I getting there? Go back to the GPS. How many more miles do I go? How many more minutes do I got to get to? Am I making progress in that region? And they're staying focused on that. So they know what they're trying to get forward, and they're not going to get distracted by everything that comes forward. Tap that.
Yeah, one, I want to comment on information too. One of the things that can happen when you start looking at performance measures is, when you first engage in that, typically what you'll measure, believe it or not, is nothing that's really measuring whether you're getting to your goals or desires. It's just something that you've got to measure. So you're just collecting data that's really not pointing you in any direction. And the other thing that happens is, departments will set themselves up to achieve their goals. So they'll set their data, da-da-da-da, we're going to do that much, and there's our goal. And they achieve their goal every quarter, or every year, or whatever they set up. So then, so then, that takes another level of analysis, okay? So if you're achieving your goal every time, you need to revisit your whole thing here because your data, your data is structured, not to really measure, but purely to achieve your goal. So those are the things to look at, look for, when you start getting into performance measures, when you start setting those things up.
And that's, that's part of, to Keith's point, when I, when my previous organization, I thought, did some really awesome things, but quite frankly, they focused year to year. They weren't walking down the road. And you know what happens? People have a cell phone, you always sort of walk in and look at their phone, they fall into a fountain, or walk into a pole, or whatever the case would be. It's not dissimilar to organizations. If they're only focusing year to year, they're not looking down the horizon. We typically, and tomorrow you're going to hear some things about our futurist program, our strategic foresight program, about long-term visioning, because it's not just that next step, it's five years down the road, it's 10 years down the road. How do you try to position your organization to be in the best position to deal with things that are likely to occur? We don't all know that with certainty, but within a boundary, you can do that. And I know when I started some work and really changing the organization, our, to Keith's point, our organization went haywire. So we started a strategic plan, and they were measuring god knows how many different, I think we had 150, 200 different KSIs. And it got to be that we were spending so much time, you know, measuring this stuff, we weren't really effectively doing what we needed to do. So to your point, you got to trap, you got to step back and say, what's important? What are my five or six KSIs? You know, you can figure out, an organization this size has more capacity than smaller. But at the same token, you don't want to go overboard, and you want to measure the right things. Because if you're not striving, if they're not overarching, you know, goals and aspirations, and you're just kind of doing the same, you're going to not advance your organization, you're not going to get to that next point.
I want to add to that, because I know, like, when I was a teacher, you know, a public school teacher, and they always tell you to set your rules for your classroom, but not to make it more than five. So you would want, like, to list out all the, you know, but you have to find a way to articulate the rules into just five.
Yep.
And that way, the kids, it's very simple. These are the rules. This is, you know, do not talk when I'm talking, or how, whatever's important to you for your classroom, or whatever. So I think it's important for us to simplify also, like, maybe our departments, or what are the five, or what are the, you know, what are the five things that we're trying to do, or the five goals, or the five most important things? Because I think we're all kind of used to that, like, kind of from grade school up, like, you know, these are the five rules, and that's it. Like, you don't have to go into the detail, like, don't hit, don't scratch, don't, just respect others. You know, that's the rule.
Everything I learned about an adult, I learned in kindergarten.
Right, 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 right.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yep. Your point is exactly on track. So just give you an example. You've got, I think, I think you had eight, eight program areas, eight pillars and, or six pillars and eight goals, or something like that? Maybe you start with some overarching of each, of each pillar, you know, what am I going to measure to find out if we're moving the bar? And then under each of your strategic goal, maybe the goals have a couple of different ones, but two or three on the start. That's a manageable number. But don't get caught up in, you know, tracking everything to, because you'll spend more time in data tracking than really accomplishing what you want to do. So yeah, your point is directly on. This next piece, I'm sensitive of time, we're at about 4:30 now. This is a piece that I want to do, but I think to the extent you have a broader audience tomorrow, I'm going to defer. Maybe we start off with doing this, and I realize some folks haven't had the benefit of this conversation. Basically, we've developed a thing, it's called our polarity assessment, and it's going to ask you to rate, on a scale of one to 10, a series of questions. How often you do it, or how often you don't do it. And then from there, that will lead to a kind of a composition snapshot of governance, of how you operate as a group. And then at that point, I'm going to be kind of dealing with the highest levels of the things that are probably of concern to you based on how you score on that process. So with your comfort on that, I prefer to do that tomorrow, since maybe we'll have a few other people, and I can kind of start off in that arena. So I won't go in that direction now. So let me just real quickly go to the last piece here then, as we get closer to closure. So the point of what today was about, and now it'll be a piece of tomorrow morning as well, is that what you do now matters. Not only in terms of the success and the effectiveness of your current organization with your current staff, but also looking forward with a different composition of a council and a new administration lead in your administration. And I think the concept of, this definition of insanity is doing the same things over and over and expecting a different result. So at some point, you have to decide, are we where we want to be now as an organization and as a community, or do we want to be something bigger and better and bolder? I can't answer that question. Only you and your community and your colleagues that are running for office can make that decision. But what I can tell you is, if you're treading water, you're simply treading water. You're not advancing your organization. So I think in what I've seen in terms of relatively quick deep dive into your organization, you've got the bones of some good things here. You've got some efforts, you've got some plans, you've got some efforts, you've got economic development activity, you certainly have some unique positioning that you've done for the economy. But you also have some areas, just as a trained city manager, that you can, you can be much better with some changes along the line. And that's what I would encourage you to consider about. If you're comfortable where you're at now, then that's fine. And every community has to answer that question themselves. But if you really want to go to that next level, you're in a unique position to make changes, not only with what you're doing now with some of these governance processes, but certainly as you build your team, build your manager, and allow him or her to build their team and the culture going forward as well. So that's kind of what I'm saying. If you're comfortable, great. If you want to make changes, the stuff I'm talking about here will help you get there. And also, I will tell you, to the extent that you're comfortable making that and you kind of walk that talk as a community, it will attract a higher-quality candidate. Because candidates that, communities that have things kind of going well, I go back to, everyone wants to be on a winning team. And they're going to position themselves to say, hey, I can bring this, and I like the energy, the excitement, the direction, the vision they're going with. But if you're just kind of stuck and you don't want to make those changes, that high-quality caliber candidate is going to go to the other community that wants to do those things. Because people in this profession ultimately want to be successful, and they want to leave a legacy in the community they've worked in, just like you want to leave a legacy in the communities that you've been elected to do. And the good, high-performing managers are going to want to come to high-performing organizations. Now, that being said, you may not be there at the time you're recruiting, but you're talking where you want to go. And to the extent that you're willing to walk and talk that area, you will attract candidates who are saying, I want to be part of that because I can help that organization get to the next step. But they want to be working in concert with you as elected officials in the community and helping you get there. They don't want to be, I'm talking this, but I'm doing this. I've got to be on the same page as well. So I'm going to just leave you today with some kind of thoughts about governance as we move and get prepared to talk tomorrow. Why this stuff matters, use this as an example. Eliminate ambiguity and uncertainty for the city council, the staff, and stakeholders, including developers, residents, and other stakeholders who bought, built, expecting certain services and surrounding environments. We all talked about the services your constituents want, the planning, the documents, we talked about your land use, you know, can I expect certain outcomes to come about? Not say there's not dialogue and discussion, but there's some level of certainty to it. That's why this matters, and that's why successful communities really structure and work hard at their governance processes. And I mentioned before, even in some places where it's painful, the certainty of misery is better than the misery of uncertainty. Another great political wisdom, Pogo came up with that one. And I often tell those communities where I'm working with that the next slide is, we've seen the enemy, and the enemy is us. So you have the ability to make that change, but only you can make that change. So having the power to do it versus actually doing it are two different things. And the communities that we find that are really successful, willing to be transformative and really want to make their organization as best as they can, don't want to be the enemy in the mirror and looking at themselves in the process. So a couple pieces before we wrap up. I want to leave you with a thought of what is your shared vision of the mayor and council that staff can count on every time to be their, this benchmark for decision-making? Their staff, your staff, I rarely meet staff that are not trying to do everything humanly possible and above and beyond that to meet your expectations. But in some cases, councils can be like Sybil with multiple personalities. And it can also be like mommy dearest, where you're getting beat up in a hanger, you know, in a closet somewhere along the line. That's not the staff you want to have that are willing to fall on the sword to do you. But if you treat them well and give them direction and give them some consistency so they understand where you're at, why you're at, and where you're probably going to go, they'll help you get there. But if you're beating them up and changing direction all of the time, you know, it's mommy dearest all over again, or, you know, dealing with Sybil with 16 different personalities. So recognize the importance of that. So a couple of things just to leave you with. 11 principles, and these are just high-level items for thoughts, and we're going to give you all this stuff so you'll have it before you. Base your decisions on the next generation more than the next election. Be committed to the ideal, that my loyalty must be to the entire community, both now and in the future, and not merely to those who got me elected. That's a tough thing to say to an elected official. But at the same token, remember the role and the critical role you play in terms of the unifying vision for your organization and your community as a whole. Not surprisingly, vision, mission, values, the benchmark, they become the value and the lens in which you're looking at for the best for the entire community. And even if sometimes that may be against what you think the wishes of your individual district may be. There are times, think about this as a parent. If you've had multiple kids, sometimes your kids ask you for things that are the most important thing to them, but you have to say no for the right reasons. I don't mean to minimize that, but there are times you have to say no for the right reasons because it's not in the best interest of the family or the circumstances involved. Make decisions on facts, based evidence, allow myself to be, don't be, allow myself to manipulate into bad decisions or future based on the decibel level of the critics. The number of people to come, the process, remember I talked about caves, cave people, the articulate incompetence, things of that nature. You've got to listen to them. I'm not saying not. Got to treat them with respect, but at the end of the day, make a decision that's based on facts. Before, another great political wisdom speaker, takes a smart man to know where he's stupid. Anybody know where that came from? That would be Barney Rubble, of all places. You're not going to be an expert in everything you know. And there's going to be, you've got to recognize your blind spots with each other and with staff. And so let your staff help fill in those blind spots. And then, you know, you value those that have courage to tell me what they really think. You'll listen to them. You'll disagree without being disagreeable, recognizing that other perspectives, that six and the nine example that I gave you before. Number five, embracing your responsibility to govern rather than to manage. I know this is hard because we're all elected officials, and we run businesses, and we run our operations. That's your role of your city manager and your staff. And if you're doing their job and also trying to do my job, something isn't getting done.